I will now open the Estacada City Council Retreat. I want to thank everybody for coming tonight. I want to thank Public Works and Library and everybody for being here also. It's nice to have us all in the same room. I never get a chance to see these guys unless they're pissed off because I did something wrong. So it's nice to have them in the room on a good note. Also have Elena and Peter here. It's nice. And Alan, thank you all for coming today. I think this is going to be a better retreat having everybody in the room like this. And we haven't had this in the past. So you know, you hear what we we talk about after the fact, instead of being in the room to give us help figuring out what's best for the city of Estacada. So we appreciate that. We want to thank John Legarza also for being here today to moderate and meter eight and do everything that makes this retreat special. We want to thank Sadie over there in the far corner. She never gets enough praise back there in the corner, but we love her dearly. So thank you, Sadie. In that, I will ask for roll call and then we will go into the retreat and I'll let you take it away.
Councillor Dolezal?
Here.
Councillor McElroy?
Here.
Councillor Metcalf?
Here.
Councillor Prokop?
Here.
Councillor, oh, sorry. Councillor Tenbusch?
Here.
Mayor Dinkman?
Here. Thank you very much for that. All right, John.
Hello? Okay, great. Awesome. All right. Well, thank you, Mayor and Council. It's great to be back here again this year. And I just got to say it's exciting. I'm really impressed with looking over your goals from last year. And you know, we're going to be hearing about that when Melanie starts off here today, kind of doing a review of that. But really, you know, back to you, Mayor and the Council and the leadership and the City Department staff here. I mean, you guys, a big lift. I mean, when you look at what we talked about last year, going through goal setting and what we're going to be looking at today going forward. And again, you know, this is a five-year plan that we continue to update and look at that vision of where you're going to go as a city here. And I just got to commend you and the staff here, Melanie, and the staff and the leadership. You know, for a city this size, you've taken on a lot of tasks and you're moving forward and it's to be commended. You look at a lot, a lot of cities at this size in the region. They have challenges, but you guys are finding solutions and you're moving forward with that. So I'm excited for today's review. Melanie will go through that and then we'll go through. We have about seven strategic new goals that some are kind of going to be blended with what we've seen from the past and continue to build on that, but looking forward to that today. So with that, Melanie, we'll go through the first review here and then do we remember who the winning champion trivia team was from last year here? Who won last year? Oh, okay. So just to kind of go over, well, you know, as Melanie, once we get done here, we'll take a little break and then we have, I don't know, we got to find like a trophy, I think, Melanie, like coming up here in the future, you know, something for the defending trivia team here. But you know, we'll go in and then we'll take a break, go into the trivia and then come back and go through the seven new goals. And then we'll go, I'll kind of go through all those goals. And then one of the things that we've added this year is to really talk about an urban, your urban renewal district, right? So you have an existing urban renewal district that's going to be sunsetting here and exploring that for a new urban renewal district, right? Those are, you know, as we look at challenges within the state and getting revenue and opportunities to keep dollars within your community here. I'll have an urban renewal 101. We have some new folks that haven't been around the urban renewal 101. So I'll go through that. And then we'll come back again and go through the seven goals and, and you know, talk about each of those goals there. So again, thank you for your time. You know, it's Sunday. Appreciate everyone coming in here too from that standpoint. So Melanie?
Okay, thanks, John. And I would like to say thank you too, but everybody's, I just would reiterate, I guess what everybody has said. I do appreciate Council coming in on a Sunday afternoon to spend time. We've blocked out four hours and we'll see if we get done faster than that, but probably it'll take us a while. Sometimes just having, it's having the conversations and having the time to have the conversations and really is what helps us move forward. And so I appreciate staff coming in too. And if, while I'm giving this kind of, it's a what, what we've been doing and then looking to what we could do next. If, if staff wants to interject into there and when it relates to you, feel free. And then if there's questions or ideas as we're going along, I counsel feel free to to chime in also. And then I realized I did not bring a pen over here, so I should probably. I opened up a Word doc, but I think you know, I have two. I do better if I write it down on paper. So we'll try to keep track of, of, you know, the comments that are made. And I know John is listening here. I do appreciate, John, we spent quite a bit of time on Zoom on Friday, going through what we're going to go over today and figuring out the best way to so that I'm not in like this tailspin that I contend to do is like, you know, I just kind of like go in circles until we get to where we want to go and it takes longer. So John's keeping us on a straight line here today. But anyway, I will start with, this is not a great presentation. It's not really in presentation format. It's kind of in. Oh, dear. Oh, so I don't have to do this because you're going to share it on there?
Yeah.
I can still put through it when it's on there? All right, let's try it. Oh, okay. All right. So this isn't like, I'm not going to have a slide with just a few words on it each time. So it's more like a a written report that you would receive. And then you'll, you will be able to get this afterwards. You've already got the first two columns. It does work. What do you know? But my, one of my computers isn't working. There we go. So if we, you have already seen this, it focuses on the five strategic priorities that you identified last year. It's kind of a carry forward of I, the past decade and a half. This is my 17th goal setting. And so you would think it would be, it might be tedious or it might be like just, ah, we're doing this again, but it is always exciting every year to see what is going to happen because over the past decade and a half, we have had really great leadership and it's, it's like a, not a marathon, but where a relay, it's like a relay because each of you, some of you, the mayor's been here for a really long time, you know, as providing that long-term consistency, but the councillors have kind of come and then they'll pass it off to the next person that gets elected. They serve their term. They bring the vision and then they, and we just keep moving it forward. And it's really been great for Estacada to have the vision that we've had over the past 15 to 20 years, longer than that probably. So the first two columns that are here, you've already seen. You saw it at Mach Speed because we had an extra long council meeting with more discussion than I anticipated. So by the time I got to my report, I just really breezed through this fast. But you have already seen those two columns. I'll remind you that the highlighted items are what, when, when staff went through this together and talked about it, I asked them, what are the the things that they've done this past year in 2024 that meant the most to them? They were the most proud of. They were the most pleased with how it turned out. However, that, that was, this is their, the highlights of their year. So that's why I highlighted them in yellow. So we'll just go ahead and get started. And if my screen, if I forget to click, let me know. First of all, we're going to talk about infrastructure development. And in the past year, we've gotten quite a lot done. I also handed out this 2024 At A Glance. It's a draft version. And it kind of goes month by month, what happened. And that's a nice little exercise for me because once we get past something, I kind of, it's in the, it's in the past and I just let it go and we keep moving forward. So it's nice to have that chance to look back, but as far as moving the first strategy here, completion of the wastewater treatment plant, that really moved forward significantly this year. We contracted with Slaton as a CMGC, which is, I think, has been really helpful. We had that really surprise meeting when we got the the actual 60% cost and then we value engineered that. And if we hadn't have had Slaton on board to do that, I think that we could have gone, we could have got farther off track. And I think by seeing what we were doing, like we thought we were going this way and we were kind of, you know, the engineering plans, we needed to pull them back in. We need to say, okay, this is what we want, but you don't really know how much it costs until you actually get out there and cost it out. And then we were able to correct, bring that back on. And without Slaton being there doing that, I think we would have, I would have just kept pushing forward. Now I've learned that you can get an independent cost person to come in and give you these cost assessments partway through at, or at key points so that you know what you're expecting. But having Slaton on board has been fantastic to, and they've been good to work with as well as Kennedy Jenks. We are going to be pushing that date out. You can see in my next steps, the finish date now is looking like it's going to be fall of 2027 because we are still waiting on federal approval. And they're telling us that it could be some, it'll be, it could be summer. It could be late summer. I'm fingers crossed for earlier in the, earlier in the year, but we're pressing forward because we know that it's being designed to meet the requirements. So it's, it's pretty much checking the boxes. Is all they have to do. They have to take a look at it, make sure we've checked the boxes and then it'll, it'll go forward. But that will make us breaking ground instead of a couple of months ago. It's going to be in the summer.
We're going to have the 90% engineering.
They submitted the 90% engineering on Friday. And so Slaton is working on that as far as getting the bid packages ready. And that kind of falls into, it's, we're like in this, what we did, what we're doing, we're right in the middle of that. The, we're going to do it, engage local contractors in a meeting on February 19th, I believe it is. And so we're getting geared up for that because we have a lot of local contractors that have probably never worked on a project of this size, or maybe they don't do prevailing wage jobs. And we'd like them to know they can do it. And so Slaton and Kennedy Jenks are going to come and help them, you know, answer questions for them. How, how does this work? And and then also take feedback on, hey, if it's, if if the bids go out looking like this, then it doesn't really give me an opportunity to bid on that. But if you can break this up or something, then it'll, it'll allow our local contractors to bid more. So that's coming up. That'll probably be, it'll be mid-January or mid-February or so before they have that the bids ready to, to advertise. And that's why on the 19th, we're going to have the local, our local folks come in and as many as want. So help spread the word. We're going to really start blasting that out this coming week. And that's kind of our next step. So that pushes the, the guaranteed maximum price that would be coming to council probably in June because they're going to get those bids back. They're going to work through. You know, taking a look at what that cost is going to be, if we need to do some additional value engineering or something, we can work on that. But then we'll bring you, and they're also going to come and do an update, I think in March, so that you're not just waiting clear till June to talk to them and ask questions. But they won't have that guaranteed maximum price until June. And then our goal is to break ground in summer. We have, you also, last year you approved the, the order of the long lead time items. So we've got those on order so that they won't be holding this up. And I feel like it's been a lot of plates spinning, but you've been tracking with us and working. We meet weekly. Chris and Elena and I meet with Kennedy Jenks and Slaton team and go through what, where we're at, what's happening and what's the next steps and we keep each other moving forward. So any questions on that one? Okay. All right. And then water improvement systems. So we do have the, we purchased property for the new high-level reservoir. And that, that has gone out to bid. I don't know, I don't know if Dawn remembers. So I want to put you on the spot because I don't remember. I don't know when it's, when the bids are due for the construction of that. But Kurt also told me that it takes a while to get the tank, like the actual tank itself will take a while. So I'm not sure, it's, I don't think it's, it's not going to be built before summer, but it's supposed to be built this year. And I know Chris would love it if it was built this summer. But from what I understand, it, it takes a while to get that material. So it is moving forward though. Doing some upsizing of the pipes and replacement of media this winter. That has started and it's continuing. So that's again, one of those things that's, we're right in the middle of. And then completing the water master plan, which let us know what we need to do over the next few years for water, water production and for recovery of that water loss, that 37% water loss that we are experiencing. That's a project that, that Dawn will be working on. So collections and distribution and collections. Once it leaves the plant or before it gets it back to the other plant, that's all Dawn's department. He's working with Karen MacLeod on coming up with a really a robust plan to attack that water loss. And then also the INI, which is on the other side. But yes.
I just saw that it, I read that the water main through the mill site decommissioned was, was decommissioned and that was expected to lower the water. And so that didn't happen.
The, we completed the project, yeah.
But it didn't affect the water loss?
I don't, I'm, I think it did. I just, I don't know the actual numbers though.
So what, we did that, was that in the summertime that we did that?
We did it around July, July, September.
So we'll have, we are tracking, I don't have those numbers for you today, but that's a report I should get to you. Water loss report.
And that pipe was decommissioned? Did all the pipe outside of the mill area also get?
No, we put a, we put an inline valve up by Whispering Pines.
Or pull the mic down.
Sorry. We put an inline valve in by Whispering Pines and that connected it there. So whoever builds in the mill can hook around that valve and continue on. And then it goes OD Steel somewhere in the mill, which is tar-wrapped metal pipe. And so it leaked and then it goes underneath the highway to the RV dump, to a chunk of valves. And then we decommissioned it there. And there's already a main there and we hooked the wastewater plant up to the new main and the RV dump. So we just decommissioned that whole entire trunk.
But that same pipe, none of that old pipe going the other direction?
No.
No.
So I think that's one thing and that could be one of your goals too, is monitoring that water loss report because the, our administrative staff are working on figuring out how to set that up and something we can really track. So we can see how the water loss is coming down this year. I think the goal that the engineer set was 1% a year in the plan, which based on where we're at, that's unreasonable. We need to be taking chunks out of it, at least for these first couple of years. And then we'll keep on working on finding all the little spots and correcting those. Yes.
Do we have a target percentage that we want to be at come this time next year?
I, well, we haven't really set a goal, although I did put in here, decrease water. So I guess kind of preemptively, I set a goal, 5%, 5 percentage points annually. So if we're at 37% right now, I would expect that by this time next year it'd be 32%, and then next year it'd be 27. And we're going to like be taking chunks. But I don't really know until we get to work how fast we can get that down or not.
And then it'd be safe to assume, we'd have to obviously go back to see whether, what specific month it was, but you could be safe to assume you couldn't really calculate a measurement until then anyway, to see what the accurate, what the accurate representation would be due to the mill property being off for a year at that point?
We can, I think we can look, or you can look back at other, at months previously, before it was decommissioned and then after. So we just need to get that report put together and figure out a good format where people can read it accurately, you know, easily and but I just, and I don't know, I didn't talk to Dawn when I put this in here, but I just asked, I said, if we could go down five points each year, I think that would be, but until we get through that first year, maybe we'll get a 10% chunk right off the bat because there's things that we didn't realize that are easy to correct. But
What was water loss at our last goal-setting meeting? I thought it was like 34. Did it go up 3% in the last 12 months?
No, I don't, I don't remember the last time we did a water loss report.
Right. We hadn't been tracking it for a while, for a couple of years, for a few years. Yeah.
Can we get a measurement on that sometime soon? So we have that information to just see how we did the last 12 months? I know we haven't taken a lot of actions yet, but just want to see.
I mean, even if we cut it off, if we gain two or three, but we've been gaining two or 3% a year going up and then we're able to get it going in the other direction.
And we, we weren't aware of it, or I wasn't aware of it until, was it summer when Amy brought that to us? From Karen MacLeod. And I thought she had to be wrong. And then I guess she's, was it May? Okay, yeah. That's when we became aware. And that's right when, of course, everybody wants to start using water. And we're like, wow, we're part of the problem. We need to get this, get a grip on this. And so, yeah, we'll, we'll get a report put together going forward. But if you wanted to set a goal around that, my guess would be a goal of 5%. Or not 5%, but 5 percentage points. So jumping by, down by 5 percentage points each year.
Is this the time when we're supposed to be adding our thoughts to these subjects? Or we're going to revisit this later?
We will revisit it later, right? Right. So this is just kind of clarification. Yeah.
Yeah, I apologize for the.
No, that's all right. In fact, so what we kind of did as staff is we went together, we looked at what the last year's goals were. And then we kind of said, what's the next natural step so that we can provide you information? So that you're not just randomly trying to pick goals for, like, what, what are the next steps? So I'll, I will start moving a little more quickly through this though. But we are going to construct the high-level reservoir. That could be part of the strategy for our water system improvements this year, finishing up our piping upgrades at the water treatment plant and possibly pre-ordering our filters. That is dependent on the amount of money we have available to do that because I think they're about $3 million. But we have a loan for the high-level water reservoir. And so if we don't use our SDCs for that, then we'll, we'll be able to accumulate, you know, we use the loan instead and pay that back slowly. We could potentially, you know, get those on order sooner than later, but we'll need, that'll probably come out more in the budget process upcoming. But Kurt said there's, it's a long lead time to get those. So we want to have them pre-ordered. Looking down on the next column, the addressing essential infrastructure projects, that the, getting that screw press in at the, at the wastewater plant was a tremendous help. Think it's really taken the pressure off of Chris for, he's struggling against, it was a losing battle is what it was. And he was doing the best he could. But having that new equipment, having it installed and operating so well. And, and he and the guys are running it and they run it weekly and haul stuff out weekly. It has been great. I don't know if you want to add anything to that, but it's just.
Allowed us a chance to get caught up on solids. Solids, as we've been, set it open for six months, waiting for dry weather.
So it's made the plant happier. Yep. So that was a, I'm thankful for all of this stuff that we do. It goes through the approval and the authorization of the council. And I really appreciate the support that council provides for us to keep trying new things and moving things forward like that. Because that was a big help. Main Street got done last year. And we did an SDC update, the INI project on Forest and Grove, and then paving Forest and Grove was done. And we got such a good bid on that that Dawn was able to also pave current, part of current, and then Jeremy Loveless. And that was fantastic because that, I didn't put any pictures in this year in review yet, but the before pictures were horrendous. I'm surprised we didn't lose a fire truck in a pothole or something. There wasn't potholes, but we just alligatored out and it was, it was a mess. So really glad that he was able to do that and he had the foresight to, you know, be able to plan for that. And take advantage of the opportunity when it came up. And then the water main through the mill site was decommissioned. And the hillway connection got started, which I'm excited about also because I think that's really going to help traffic through the school zone. So looking forward, we want to continue to work on INI. DEQ really wants to see a robust INI, which is influ and infiltration. And that's what the water, so the sewer pipes that are collecting, you know, it goes from people's houses into our mains. And those, they'll let ground, if they get, you'd think this, the sewer water would, if there's a crack, it would go out. But what happens is the groundwater pushes in. If there's any pipe or if a root goes up through that pipe or something and makes a crack, the groundwater gets in. And a lot of our pipes are older in the older parts of town. And so we are, DEQ wants us to have a robust plan on how we are going to address INI because the violations that we're experiencing at the, at the wastewater treatment plant are on our high water days, like the rainstorms come through, we have a high amount of rainfall, and then we get a big flow through the the wastewater plant because of the INI getting into the pipes and it messes up the, the way that the biology works, I guess, is I'm not saying this quite right, probably.
You gotta be in, that's all to grow the river. So when your flows double or triple overnight, there's no way you're gonna make those counts. Trying for like a 1.3. And that you're at 3.5.
Set that mic.
And that's all I. Underline flows, we're still down. We're still down just under the design dry weather flow with all the building going on. But the winter time, it's just through the roof.
But Kurt was, and Kurt was saying that we've gone from 4 million gallon days down to like two and a half or 3 million gallon days, but are we still having those others?
Depends on the weather.
Yeah. So that is, that's a high priority that again, Dawn will get to work on in the collection pipes. So he's got his work cut out for him. We'll be finishing the hillway connection. There's going to be, we're working on some speed management best practices. Is that, because that's going to be a really nice little curvy road going on through there, nice and wide. And so looking at some flashing speed signs and some speed humps on that, on hillway coming up. We are, are working on the engineering and land acquisition for the River Mill Road and Eagle Creek Road intersection. Looking to see if we can get some grants. There's some things that have come up recently. We might be able to get grants to move that ahead faster. But the council this past year approved a traffic circle at that intersection instead of just the three-way now and future four-way stop. So, or a traffic signal four-way. So that is on the docket. And then high priority, we're getting the, some of the, the priorities of traffic and public safety committee are to really work in the school zones. I think hillway connection will reduce the the impact of traffic through the school zone that isn't necessarily going to, but just going through. So that's, that will hopefully help. But then also, we just want to make sure that we're hitting that hard to get those traffic safety improvements in the school zone. And then to help with the infrastructure projects, I also put on there, add some new staff positions. I was, that might be on the wrong spot, but just wanted to say we're looking at some parks, maybe a park supervisor and some help with facilities. Because Public Works is so busy that we used to just interrupt them and say, hey, we need to have this done or we need to have that done, or this is happening in this building. Can you fix it? And we're at kind of at a point where we, it would be beneficial to have a facilities person. So that is a thought for moving forward. And then study the new urban renewal area, which we'll go over quite a bit later. But we, it was presented to the Economic Development Commission with, and I don't think you got to go through the training yet, but but John will be doing that to come up with, up with a map. And so we'd like to develop a, or set up a technical advisory committee and engage the development, the Economic Development Commission. And then also we'd like to put together a really nice report that tells the story of this current urban renewal district that has, has two more years. And then it'll, it'll be at its 20-year mark and will sunset. But it's got some really good stories in it. So we'd like to work on that. Okay. Let me go forward. You got it. Thank you. All right, me here too. All right, next. Our next, next priority was community engagement and education. And you can see highlighted there is hiring the outreach librarian, getting, getting Ramona or Bookmobile on the road. That was, that's been great. She's been at many, many city events. She's going out into the district. The library district, which extends beyond city limits and reaching out to people there. So that was a highlight. We also got, this is qualified for, but we act, we qualified, but we actually got her on, brought her on board. Ellie, you've probably met. She's our AmeriCorps member, doing outreach and engagement for TMDL, which is a water quality, stormwater water quality and general water quality. And having her on board and also having Evelyn in community development has helped me to realize how beneficial it is to have communications people because Evelyn, that's not her total job, but she's very, very good at it. And Ellie, Ellie, this is her communication and engagement outreach. That's her thing. And she's doing phenomenal. And it's so helpful to have somebody doing that. She'll be with us until August and, do you want to? July. Oh, till July. Okay. She'll be with us till July. Typically, AmeriCorps pays half and then whoever the benefiting partner is pays half. But Elena was able to get a grant through DEQ. And so DEQ is funding the other half of her stipend. It's not really, is it a stipend or whatever? She's getting paid a little while she's doing this work for a year out of, out of school. So next steps that we, I'd kind of like to highlight for your consideration are adding a permanent communication outreach coordinator. And developing, we talked about in the past, having a communication plan, but I wrote here, communication standards. So we have a consistent message. It looks the same, the voice is the same. And we have all this. Um and we have all this the messaging and outreach going out to the community on a consistent basis in in a variety of different ways because we know not everybody looks in the one spot to get the information. So um and then town hall events, I thought those were really successful this past year, the two that you hosted. Um one in February and one in May. And uh so if you want to identify any topics or if you just liked that having a town hall where people could come and and talk to you in general. Um you know, that might be a goal you would want to set. I don't have any plans for those right now, but um I know they kind of come along with the projects. But then if you have specific ones you'd like to talk about. Um and then civics academy is going really well, succeeding my expectations, which is really fantastic. It is super fun getting a group of new people in here. Some of them I know, some most of them I did not. And they're very engaged and very interested in learning about um city initiatives, city, how the city runs, what the budget is. What last this last week was land use. Thank you, Alan, you did a fantastic job. That is so complicated in Oregon. Um and this was your first time really teaching on the topic as a whole, I think. So um it went really well, they asked great questions, uh Councilor Dolezal is part of that. And um so we'll have to get some feedback from you, but I think I'm really happy with how it's going so far.
It's great. Uh I'm learning a ton and and also exactly what you said, that the people that are going and the attendance has been great. I'm learning stuff from them, ideas, things I hadn't even thought about for in terms of future facilities and and community things for here. So it's it's awesome.
Great. And any of you are welcome to sit in if you want to just pop into one of the sessions, we have three more to go. Um so feel free to come in and sit in and listen. Um increased awareness of ongoing projects. This is kind of again on the communication and engagement and ways, different ways to engage people. Um though we did during the Main Street project last year, we had we weekly updates that went out. Um I didn't get a lot of feedback from the community on that, but I also didn't get a lot of complaints or concerns. I will say our contractor was fantastic and they met people on the street and talked to them. So that was really helpful. Um but I think it just having all that information available was helpful. Um we'll need to up our game a little bit with our wastewater treatment plant updates. I feel like I think Elena's been updating those. Um and I need to pay more attention to how those are going. But it's kind of, I I gotta say, on the last this last week's meeting, um and I'm going to keep this to an hour, so I gotta keep moving. But this last our team meeting every week, this last week, I felt a little bit of a, gosh, this is taking forever. It's getting weird, you know, we're getting we it's it's a long time. And I appreciate you sticking with us, helping us move it forward, supporting the work that staff is doing. I going out to that site visit in November, December, whenever we did that, um was I thought that was really helpful. And um thank you, Chris, for not growing weary, helping us keep going, Elena, keep going. Um it's just there's so much, we're wading through such deep water, it feels like, to get through the federal permits, to get and things keep coming up with PGE. And it's like there's there's not like a, just like Steve Donovan said, you know, it's not an easy path forward, but we are continuing to push forward on that. And um so we'll keep keep updates that Sladen will be coming and updating the council in March. And we'll keep information going on that so people know that it's moving forward. We created that water use graph last year. Um and now I think we should do, like, we were just talking about the water loss report. So people know that we're working on that, making progress on water loss. And that'll be um, it could be slow progress. It could be, you know, we where we see change over a few months of time, but we we do need to see change in that. So that would be a good thing to include. Um the yard debris program sent out a lot of information on that and still surprised some people. So again, just continue to um work to raise awareness and any goals you want to set regarding how we communicate to people, we can do that. And we did get out there and had the the door hangers delivered to neighborhoods that have the sprinkler systems because they were the ones tech typically using the most water in the summer. Um so there was door hangers sent out and to promote those water audits that Clackamas River Water Providers. Um they sponsor and promote conservation. Um and then uh also getting people ready that that for the tiered rates. They won't fill those tiered rates probably until summer rolls around. Um but they at least hopefully it raised awareness so they know to start watching their water bill and trying to control that. Um so we're gonna, next steps is continuing our water use graph during summer months. Going to keep, oh, I don't know if you guys have noticed, but we started putting like every other week in the newspaper, there's a little blurb from the city. Um so I'm not sure, like, some people check social media, some people check the website, some people read the newspaper. Um but it's been going out in the newspaper, so if you check that, there's a section, it's about a, is it a quarter page, about a quarter page section from the city. Um so we want to keep doing that because we know that is how some people get information. And then posting projects on city on the city website during construction for whatever we're working on. And then engaging youth and the younger generation into the committees. Um and this is ongoing, we could consider hiring a summer intern to start learning about um the like the way the city works is a little slightly different than just a regular business. Um and maybe that would be, you know, is hard to kind of hard to get volunteers. We do hire summer help for Public Works, but maybe hiring summer help to help us out with some projects inside City Hall too. And and they can attend meetings and and learn about minutes and I, you know, I don't know. All the stuff that is kind of commonplace to us once you get going in it, but it's new to to some. So that is the update on community engagement and education. All right, and then we have economic growth, business opportunities, um attracting businesses and industries in the downtown and industrial areas. So we did um contract with the Economic Development Professional. John has been helping us with through his company, Healthy Sustainable Communities. Um we got the market study completed. There are um new property owners in downtown that are working on expanding or upgrading their own their properties and um expanding their businesses and filling vacant buildings. Do we have vacant buildings right now downtown? I'm kind of thinking, I know we have one on Second. Um we have Ondelay across the street, we have a few more to go, we have a vacant lot across the street over there. Um but there we've got a pretty vibrant downtown. Um and now one of the things is um, want to get down a little bit further, but is expanding the availability. We have a bigger downtown, but a lot of it's taken up in yards, like um um utility yards and stuff. And so we don't really see those, but we've by doing Main Street, we kind of doubled the size of our downtown because it feels like Main Street was the pass through and Broadway was our downtown. Now we've got two streets that um the traffic slowed a little bit, pedestrian amenities. Um hopefully we'll have more, some more redevelopment going on over here. Um and if we went the other way towards Zobrist and Wade, um there's also properties that are available that need to be redeveloped. And um so those those are something that John and I in School District, Reliance Connects, um ODOT has been in talks about how those can be improved. But um things coming up or things to think about for as you're working on goals. Um we got the market study posted on the website, but we want to continue to be open and available and um um welcoming, welcoming to new business opportunities that would come in or our local businesses that might want to expand, you know, and and make sure that they know they're welcome. And if there's any way that we can help, we can do that. Um budget for wayfinding signage, oh, I didn't put those, that's what I forgot. I didn't put any wayfinding signage pictures in in um here. But John and I have been talking about, and we, you know, I think it was last year or the year before, uh we were going to try to do some wayfinding signage. And my my idea was the little green sign you see in Oregon City, it has a little person and a little bicycle and tells you how far. And they're pretty standard, I think they're in Portland too. Um but if we had a city themed type of a signage program, uh we'll probably be bringing that to you. Um that might be one of your goals too, to have us keep working on that.
If you don't mind just a second, um before we go on your wayfinding signs. I I remember back in the day, they've been here so long, that uh Bill Linglebach uh put in the wayfinders on all the roads here and they're done in steel.
Yes.
So can we convert those over into a more uh accommodating, more modernized wayfinding? And then just repurpose those, repaint and powder coat them, do everything and get people going in the right direction.
I think those might be good locations. I know this one over here still points us to a video rental store. And so I don't know if we could, I don't, since they are steel, I don't know if they could be repurposed, but we could look at that. And but also look at, yeah, making them because there there was a um consistency on signage. So I think that I forgot that Phil had spearheaded that, but that was back in the EDA days, right?
Right, that's quite a few years ago, but we worked so hard to get those put in play. And because they are steel, I know we have uh Northwest Technologies out there, we can have them repurposed, powder coated and reset.
Yeah.
And just use what we already have.
We could, yeah.
I make it look a lot better.
Yeah, let me jot that down. Anyway, that could be a, that could be one of the goals we work on as far as outreach this, you know, this coming year. Um current living wage job creation initiatives. We've been doing some outreach in the in the industrial campus, hosted a Business Connection event here. Um I think the Economic Development Commission is going to be thinking about ways that they can um, yeah, do some business recruitment and business education. Um we'll continue to build partnership with Estacada High School and the Clackamas Community College for Workforce Development. Just went to the, on Friday, I went to the Clackamas Community College State of the College address and was very inspiring. Of course, it's um they're doing really great work and um it's nice to have Dr. Cook coming out here. I think he's interested in um helping out in Estacada and, you know, with this partnership between the schools and the college and the city. We could and local businesses could get some some things moving forward on that, um promoting tourism. Um some of the things, we do have the contract with Noble Consulting and and they partnered with some of our um our commissions, the DEC especially, to work on promoting like shoulder seasons. People come out here in the summer anyway, but but um spring and fall or winter, you know, how do we keep people coming out here? So next steps could possibly be looking for partners such as Mount Hood Territory to help us promote our, we're calling it the heart of the Clackamas, right? Yeah, I've felt it used to feel like we were like way out in the middle of nowhere. And now it feels like we're kind of right in the center, even though this isn't the road that you go. People don't just come through Estacada for no reason necessarily, but we are like right between Molala and Colton and Sandy and up the river and the camping and hiking and um it's just with the river and the popularity of the non-motorized um water activities now, Estacada Lake is perfect for that and it just feels like we're centered for that. So um and then tap into funding for shoulder season event support that we're thinking of. Um the Whitewater Festival that happens in May. And uh there's a Beaver State Fling that happens in the big first part of June that brings a ton of people out here for a disc golf. And then in the fall, there's the um Fungus Festival. They weren't able to have it this year because they need could use some technical assistance in keeping that program running. And so we've been talking about ways to to do that. So those are kind of um some tourism ideas. And then um the the Economic Development Kit Commission has a full board and is working on a strategic economic development plan. So they want to bring that to the council, that could be one of their the goals you might set for them, bringing that to the councils. They keep pushing it forward and get it to you early spring for approval on on what their steps they're going to take. And then um we did outsourced economic development, which I think is really a fantastic option for us right now. Um because rather it's nice to have somebody on staff that's here all the time. But it's also fantastic to have a contractor who's out also working with other cities and making connections on our behalf while there's other work going on that they're doing. So I think that has been um that has been a good win for us. Any questions on that before we go on?
So Melanie.
Yeah.
So one thing that a prior council considered but decided not to do um was kind of a blighted blocks uh program. So code enforcement for um and I'll call it enhanced code enforcement for blocks that might be considered blighted. The city that kind of pioneered the concept was Astoria. There were some property owners that owned properties that were absent and the properties were basically abandoned. Something similar to the Ondelay Building. And um I mean, finding people is controversial, but sometimes that's the nudge that it takes for people to sell the property to someone that then wants to rehabilitate it. So um I I looked at different cities programs. The one that I felt was the most clear and objective and and thoughtful program was Astoria. Um there are some properties in Estacada that are similar to the issues that Astoria was trying to address. I think they, if you've been to Astoria recently, it's compared to like ten years ago, I mean, it's dramatically different.
Oh, wait.
So um as I was thinking about things that the council might be interested in, um that's something we could bring back for you guys to look at if if you're interested in having that discussion. And then the other thing with the industrial park is is the the issue of cannabis comes up. Um I think that the goals of the council ten years ago versus this council are kind of different. They were just trying to really spur economic activity and that certainly happened. But um now the amount of complaints we've been getting about the businesses have been really significant. And um, you know, have have made me kind of wonder, is that is that the sort of activity that we really want in an industrial plant? That's your decision, not mine. Um as far as the legal risk associated with, if you wanted to, um there's the gentleman that wants to expand uh into retail. And I need to, I don't think we could legally do that if we wanted. I don't think you can co-locate a manufacturing plant and a retail outlet in the same building. Um but I looked at the administrative rules on it. It's a little bit ambiguous, so I'd I'd want to get a ruling from um the OLCC. If if you guys were to not going forward, not allow it, what would happen is the businesses that are in there now would be a pre-existing non-conforming use, so they could continue as long as they didn't abandon the use for a year and a day. That's how that works.
Um Peter, before you go any farther, are there any um things we can do to uh mitigate the smell and stuff that is going on in the park? As far as originally, when they were put in there, there were all kinds of rules and scrubbers and everything that they had to put in play. Now, I know for a fact those scrubbers have not been used, they're pumping that smell out. And it's horrible, some days it's really bad. But are there any things that we could do as a city to make sure they start using all of the things that are out there to their ability to make that smell not so prominent? And actually, you know, uh for a, I don't know. You know.
I know, yeah. I I mean, I I think the the issue when we were first doing this, all these regulations, there weren't any data or analytics. Like nobody really understood the industry. Um there is a tool that can be used to um measure the smell. Um we have in the past forced one of the businesses in order to upgrade their HVAC. We did that in tandem with the OLCC. And um you know, I I think it's part of their business license, we could require that. Because to your point, it does not seem to the extent they have the equipment and it's installed, it doesn't seem like it's being. I mean, when I went, when I was out there with the Oregon Solutions team, the smallest, very potent.
Yeah.
I'm on board for taking a look at those going away and this grandfather and then the old ones. But for the ones that are going to remain there, can they put an hours meter on those HVAC, on that HVAC equipment? So we can see how many hours it's been running over the previous year. And then when we do the renewal of the business licenses, we could go get hours readings on those.
Yeah.
And then we'd be able to tell how much they're running them. And if they're not running them, then we don't, they don't get their new business license.
Yeah, I mean, I think we can add, we can add some of that language to the code. It's in the last two years, it's really the number of complaints that we've gotten. You know, as that business park gets built out and more and more employees are there and the activities, people, you know, we are told people are smoking in their cars during the lunch, that the cars are lining the street.
Um every day.
Yeah, a- and it's just I sometimes problems are not predictable, sometimes you can see them coming down the tracks. It really feels like, you know, this one's well down the tracks. And and again, like, you guys can you guys have a lot of discretion in regulating it if you choose to do that. Um and it's just, it's one of those issues that it it feels to me like it's kind of coming to a head. Um that and the assumptions that, because Ann Lininger was chair of that committee and and I assisted her just because I practiced municipal. Assisted her just because I practiced municipal law. The assumptions that we made around the industry were just wrong. I mean, we didn't, we didn't know what we didn't know. And so. If I could, if I had a time machine, I'd be like, hey, Anne, let's do the exact opposite of what we think we should do. And we'll end up with a much better program, but yeah, I don't have a time machine. So, yeah, I think that we can bring back concepts for regulations as far as. Kind of blighted blocks and then we can come up with regulations around the industrial park. And then ultimately you guys can decide if that's something you want to pursue.
Thank you, Peter, for bringing those two things up because those are, those are topics that have come up repeatedly over the past year. There was one illegal operation in the. In the industrial campus that took significant effort on code enforcement, law enforcement. A city attorney, I mean, it, it was all hands on deck to get that handled. And then there, we do have code that requires them to install those new filters annually and to have them inspected. But then. I guess it would be up to the folks that are, you know. Existing side by side with them in the industrial campus, is that working? Because we can't, there's things that we can't do legally, but we can require them to have those filters. If somebody, like if we get a complaint. That happens to say, hey, it's really bad out there. They can't go take a look and, and go out there, look at that, what's going on. Oh yeah, the doors are wide open. Where's your manager? Why is this? So we can, we can, those are things we can address right away, but the damage is already done. And so we're doing, I think. Pretty, I mean, I would, there's, I guess there, we could take a look if there's any more regulating we could do. But I think the regulating that we are doing, either it's working or it's not, and then it will be up to the council. Do you want to continue with that out there or not?
Sure, I think Jerry had something to do.
Not on this, it's. If you go, go back one page, the attracting businesses, I think that. One thing that we, one business that we need to really start looking at. As events and stuff start growing out here in Estacada. So in, in, I don't remember if it was 2018 or 2019, but before the fires, the, the Spartan Race. Quietly came out here and they looked at the La Di Flats area to have their, one of their. You know, races and they loved the, they loved the area, but the problem, the problem that they said about, about Estacada was that we don't have any. Hotel facilities. We don't have, you know, for these big events, there's nowhere for people to stay. And these people, there's people that travel from across country to, you know, to compete in these events. We lost out to, I don't know what city in Washington, but we lost out to a city in Washington for the Spartan Race. Moving forward, it's an annual event that they hold up there, but you know, it's just one thing if we had hotel facilities. You know, in Estacada, we, we could attract more of these events, these national events and, you know, which would bring. You know, hundreds of competitors plus. People that watch and stuff to the city of Estacada, drive business in the downtown, so.
Thank you.
And John, you're working on something to that effect, aren't you? Looking at another facility for that.
Yeah, yeah, Mayor, I think this is also something to just think on the, you know, from a goal setting standpoint is. Really getting a hotel study completed, right, for the city? And that's going to really help for, you know, if a hotel operator comes in this area. And we're looking like, probably like a boutique operator, but there's strong boutique operators, you know, McMinville Dundee. And in the region that could be attracted to here, so especially with the waterfront opportunity coming forward. And I think like when we talk about your future urban renewal area, that could be definitely something. Thinking about identifying and, and you're going to need some funding to help attract that hotel operator, but that's a great opportunity to do that. And move forward with that study to be able to have someone looking for this area, so.
So I was chair of the county's tourism board when we, we did hotel studies and the issue is. Because we're about 18 miles from the closest facility. That as far as getting lending, those aren't comps. It was the same issue that Milwaukee had for. Getting their first like five-story apartment, which they wanted is you couldn't use Portland apartment prices as comps. So I had prior to the, prior to. Zan. Locking up that property, I had had conversations with hoteliers. And we would likely need to remit back to them our transient lodging tax. And we would likely need the county to do the same thing, so that. Because in, once you have the first facility, then a subsequent facility, if there's enough demand, can then use the first one's numbers. In order to get financing, but because we don't have a market rate hotel here, we're good, we would need to come up with. Different financing tools to make them, in addition to our demographics, which they'll look at, which are very positive. Trending very positively, but and then the, the other thing that. That helps us is that the Glazers Union have, has their facility out here to train their guys and gals. Their, their people. And so right now they're having to stay in. You know, the Clackamas area and then shuttle them out. And if we actually had a market rate hotel. So we could work with them to see how many room nights they would need. So those are, those are the sort of things we could do to, to help get that. That sort of facility.
Because right now, even with the events like the, the Disc Golf Tournament, you know. The people that are coming out to that, they're not staying here, you know. The people with the Whitewater, Whitewater event, they're, they're coming out here, but they're not staying here. You know, the, and that's kind of, that's kind of what we need to capture, you know, if we really want to drive, you know, business and business in the downtown. We need to, we need to get those people to stay here. And, you know, I, I just think without, you know, hotel facilities, it's just, it's not going to be a thing.
I was wondering if there, maybe if there were incentives to give Airbnbs or bed and breakfast during event times, if we could. That is something that can happen.
That could be something we could explore too, definitely. I know we have just a couple in the area, we have a few. But that would be probably like in school, how promote or, or how to encourage Airbnb's. I know in some locations, they, that causes a housing crunch because their houses are tied up for short-term housing. But that hasn't been the case out here at this point, so we can.
And before we move on, Joel, you had a question also.
I did, but going back to the cannabis stuff, I'm looking through the code. There's all kinds of stuff about fans and being engineered and all that stuff. Is anyone actually checking?
We check once a year to make sure that they've installed the new. The new equipment. However, like are they using it? Are they leaving doors open? When they shouldn't be, things like that. How, how's the management of the program? So we can try to help them be as successful as possible by saying, hey, you need to have these things in place and you need to use them. But if they're not going to, when you go out there, if you, if it's. They're not following best practices that we are trying to provide them the opportunity to do, then there might need to be other decisions made. In regard to that. For code enforcement, also thanks for bringing that up. If you want to set goals around code enforcement. I know some places they have like a corridor that they say, okay, this is the area. We want tight and code enforcement. And sometimes, I mean, it could be all over, every nitpicky little thing you want us to go after and we could do that. It's, I hesitate to, we do a lot of phone calls and things like that to, to notify people before actual formal code enforcement. Just because of the, we don't want to present a negative front from the city coming at them. I mean, I've gotten code enforcement from the county previously and it just kind of gives you a knot in the pit of your stomach. You're like, oh, I'm in trouble. And so we try to avoid that, try to keep it positive, you know, say, hey, that we've noticed this, you need to get this cleaned up or whatever it is. But if there's, especially if you want to highlight an area that you want really to. Because it's a visible area or because it's a high priority, highly used area, whatever it is, you know, or if there's a safety, like the weeds. Making sure that grass and weeds in the yards don't grow just beyond a certain height because that's a fire safety issue, things like that that you want to prioritize. So if you want to set some goals around, maybe. What you'd like to see from our code enforcement department, that would be great. Okay, I was going to try and finish this up in the next five minutes so we can move on and also take a break. Looking at preserving the essence of Estacada on the, in the right, in the left-hand column, it says managing growth with care. And I would like to add there, maybe if you're willing, managing growth with care and good governance. Meaning that the internal workings of the city are, are being managed well also. You know, we're doing good processes with staff, we're doing good processes with, with our H R, with our. Finance, like getting a audit that has no findings, you know, things like that that we're doing internally. Sometimes we bring things to council and then I can't, I always like to say which goal it's related to and it's like, ah, this doesn't really have a goal, but it's really important. So if we could add that, that might be, you know, one thing we could do. But we're looking forward to applying for a grant to do the Parks Master Plan Update, which means if we get that grant. We have to get a consultant onboard and do that mini update. You did, you went through phase one of the Parks Land. Changes last year and then moving that forward and Alan spearheading that pretty much. And then I'd like to also suggest that we could review a section of municipal code. Once a month, we'd bring you in your council meeting, you'd have a section of code that we are making recommendations on. Because the development code is difficult to change in that it has to be noticed and go to D L C D and there's a lot more. You know, we need to have a public hearing and it's, it's just a lot more process because that's, it's land use type of stuff. But the rest of the code is our local code. Some of it is outdated, some of it maybe made sense 40 years ago, but doesn't anymore. And it's, there's a lot and there's a list in your packet of the types of things I'm talking about, so you can kind of get an idea, but we'd really like to. To get that updated and I was listening to a podcast this morning and it was talking about setting goals and then getting goals. Like you, you can't just set them and then check in in December and say, how did I do? It's like, we need to manage these all year long and, and whether you're going to achieve these goals and, and get to the end of these goals. Is how we manage them through the year. And so to set a goal, hold me accountable, to get these. These code changes to you and just keep, keep moving things forward. Every month we manage. How we're moving towards our goals. And so I just thought I would, we could do it any way. You don't have to make it a goal. But I thought it would be helpful to actually start moving through some of those goal or the code updates. And then continue with our facilities improvement research. Possibly we could go visit some other city halls that have been built recently with a city hall and administration, community space and a. Police station hub or something. So you can kind of see how other communities are doing this, what it looks like in other small towns. And then would help get some ideas for moving things forward over the next three, four, five years for us. So that's just an idea there. And then adhere, update and adherence to the development codes. This is the title 16. The Alan works in and Elena heading that up also. We are, we have, we're working on contracting with a consultant. Phase one, the, the RFP is already gone out there. They're going to do an overview of it, give us recommendations and if I'm, if you want to add anything, feel free. And then phase two would be taking the next step with the second RFP, right, to actually make those code changes. And Alan will be doing, he can do as much as he can, but we also have Winterbrook on, on contract if we get. You never know when you're going to get hit with a whole bunch of land use applications. So Alan handles them as he can and then if we have to kick one over to Winterbrook, we do that. And then this is also a longer term project, so we're probably going to do, just hire somebody to get us through this process. But it will be a little bit labor intensive for Alan anyway, yeah, and for you at your meetings. Okay, and then in that last row, communication and messaging of how we're addressing growth and preserving the essence of our community. So. That considering the residential and commercial developments, timing, it's, it's a little. I wasn't quite sure how to address that, but really communicating, Joan and I were talking about this and he might want to add in somewhere later, but. Really communicating how we're addressing the growth, how we're keeping our small town feel at the same time. How we support local and local business growth organically as it, as it wants to grow. But also. You know, looking for other, like the hotel situation or other restaurant situations that might want to come in. So it's that balance of supporting our local folks. Because we do have, we have great success with local folks, starting small and growing to a larger business and then also. Bringing in new folks and then watching that residential growth and how that's happening as well. Okay, and then my last slide. Is public safety and emergency preparedness. So we've made some progress here with the updated natural hazards mitigation plan. The thriving communities program is going to assist with the school safety zones and tech, with technical assistance on this. And the evacuation planning. We have, we, we entered in a couple of agreements with Clackamas County, the mutual aid agreement and debris management agreement. So we've kind of been working behind the scenes on that. Some things you might want to think about for the upcoming year, as I know there's been interest in. What does the city council do if we have, it'd be nice to have a few years without an emergency. We're doing good so far, I feel like, but. You know, in the event, what do we do? How does this, what's the process? And we could coordinate with the county to get you some FEMA training, which is the structure of incident command. There's I C S 700 and then 100, possibly we could bump up to 200 as well. Get council and staff into those training session, sessions and then consider doing a drill, like a tabletop type of a drill or exercise. Those are, they're always interesting when you sit down in the morning and usually they're a few hours long. And I feel like by the end of the, we've done them with fire in school and police in the past. You always learn some new things and come out with some good direction on, hey, we can work on this, we need to work on that. I didn't know this, you know, and so we, we need to coordinate better on that, things like that. So those, that might be something you want to address. And then infrastructure improvements.
Yeah, wait, before we move on. Is there a way in our emergency outreach type program that we're putting together? We can go outside the county in the FEMA. Plan that they have, I understand they have a really wonderful plan, but at the same time, a more localized plan that we as a city can put in play. So, because their perception of what our emergency situation is, is totally different, you know, and I know. Than ours. The fire was a good example. I, I sat through that and. It was a mess. I would like us to consider more looking into a localized emergency plan versus a countywide or FEMA related. Program. So is there any way we can do that?
I think that's excellent. That would be more of our own tabletop exercise then in determining. You know, what our response is and how we would manage things because the, when we could get a different trainer than the county. For that I C S, the incident command training, that's like the, it gives you the framework for how every community in the nation really. Addresses the, the, the emergency response. There is, there's a structure and then when we are, like if something, if say the fire did come further into Estacada. There's reports that we have to do to receive that public assistance. And so there's, there is a format that it might be helpful for you all to understand and maybe just start with that 700, see if it's interesting to you or not. That's typically the one I think that elected officials take, but we'll double check. But we could get a different trainer than the county for sure. And then we have that foundation. Then definitely having our own exercise, I think is where, I think that's where you're coming from, where we would determine. What is our response here on the ground in Estacada? Because we are a small community and we are dependent some, to a certain degree on other agencies and jurisdictions with mutual aid. If something big happened right here, but if something happens regionally. We're, we're on our own anyway, for quite a while. And so I think you're right, having, knowing how we respond, what our action plan is. What does staff do? What does council do? How do we coordinate with schools or fire or police? We could definitely look, it's out, do you think I'm hearing you correctly?
Yeah, no, you're on the right page. You know, in our area, my biggest fears is where, you know, whether it be. Fire, earthquake, flood, whatever the case may be. Most county agencies, federal agencies, depending on who they are, are not allowed into a evacuation zone that is at a level three. So that puts us in a, a different, whole different ballpark than what they're asking us to do. We, we, we faced that during the fire. A lot of the agencies weren't able to come in at an evac three. So we sat on the ground by ourselves, trying to figure out what to do. This is something that I think we need to prepare for at a local level versus what they're telling us our emergency plan should be. Not because I don't trust that they have experts in place and they, they, they know how that, that plays out, but I just feel like. But I just feel like after experiencing it, that we are, we have a lot of holes, a lot of holes locally. That we could have taken care of had we been prepared for something like that. And that's, you're on the right page, yeah.
Yeah, I'd like to see consultant options. I mean, there's a lot of third party consultants out there that could even give us a threat assessment. I'd be interested in looking at. Looking at options to see a contract written up that could do that, that could give us a hazard mitigation task or checklist even to show us where our soft points are in town. You have to assume that everything that you knew about the world could be changed. There's a lot of different high speed moving demographics to include eco-terrorism on the docket now. So with multi, with multifaceted attacks and things like that, we need to assume that the county could also be overwhelmed all at the same time. So I think it's absolutely essential that we have a plan for our city as well, assuming that the county and their resources are limited and strapped, as you suggested. Right? I'm, I, I do agree with the mayor on this and I do, I do see what you're saying too. I think that we should all be familiar with the process. I don't disagree with you that we should understand the fundamentals and the. And the procedure and how everybody else is communicating so that we could communicate and report our needs going up. I. Fully support you on that, but I would like to see, I would like to see options brought to us that we could discuss in like. What are some ways we could harden our community to make some assurances here? That we have things in play or that we're aware of our soft points so that we could be ahead of it should something happen. Think in terms of something happening even in an outside community that's moving this way, maybe we could get ahead of it that way because we already know our soft spots and stuff like that as well.
Okay, definitely. We do have the hazard mitigation. Plan that is the where we have a committee, an advisory committee, that's local folks that is made, that's made up of to look at what our potential threats are. And keep an eye on that and what.
Yeah, the, the county did. And it's several hundred pages long, but our major, one of our major issues is water and water pressure. So, I mean, I, every, anyone paying attention to the news saw what happened in LA. But having that, I was stunned that they only had five above ground water reservoirs. And we're trying to do one this summer, but right now that's a, that's a major. That was, I think, the number one threat that was identified is just making sure we have adequate water pressure. Particularly since a lot of the development that's happening is happening, you know, at elevation now. So that's, I think that the fire is really the, I mean, earthquakes totally beyond our control, but. Fires are really the major risk for us.
Yeah, but so what about other threats, right? External threats, say people related to. I think that I, I do hear your natural disaster and I'm not taking away from it, but I think that we need to be thorough. I don't think we leave anything off the table. I'm not saying that we're assuming something bad is going to happen. But where's the fallacy in being prepared for if it did? And then in that case, if there is mitigation, then I can tell you from experience, really quickly, your plans go to shit. Because quite frankly, the roads are plugged, they're jammed, all their great data and their overview doesn't work because people take it into their own minds, which is where a community plan would come in. Because hopefully by this time, in the case that this happened, all of us have done our jobs in this room and built trust within the community. And we've built enough transparency and laying this out that they understand and they're confident in the plan. So that we maintain controls and that we can elevate this and involve whoever, characters or whatnot need for support. All I'm asking is that we look at it from all angles. And I do agree with you, natural disaster a hundred percent, but I would like to be ahead of this.
Absolutely.
We're going to revisit it, right? We're coming back.
Yes, we're coming back. So what we're going to do is I have one more, the last thing I wanted to say was infrastructure improvement for safety. One of those things is that traffic, the traffic control at River Mill and Eagle Creek for people getting out of town. In an evacuation situation or whatever it may be. And so that might be a good infrastructure goal to set to keep that moving forward because we are going to wrap uphillway. That's another way off the hill. But we, and we have the back way out also now, but getting that intersection improved so that it's not failing. Might be a good suggestion for infrastructure wise. And then we're going to, I think we're going to take a quick break and then come back and we were going to do the. Do our little teamwork exercise. But maybe we need a quick break first.
Quick break and why don't we count off? Last year we did one, two, three and then we set up our teams.
Okay, so we do three.
Yeah, three teams, what do you think?
Okay, three teams.
Five teams, three teams.
How about? Let's do fourteen.
How many people we got? Who else playing?
Let's do four teams. So count off by four and then y'all, is that right? Now that'd be three teams of four, three teams of four.
Let's roll. Go ahead, Elena. One, two, three, four, one, two.
One, two, three.
Alright, quick, yeah, five minute break and then we'll come back and we'll do our little activity and that way we can move around a little bit. And about one thirty, we will head into our, like the goal.
Okay, well, thank you everyone participating in the second annual trivia contest here in goal setting, so. Again, thanks to the, you know, the departments here. That's a lot of work. If you think about some of the infrastructure that's been maintained here, that's for sure. So. What we're going to do, just to help with time here and storm and everything is just to make sure as we go through. Each goal, we put up the goals that you have been working on up here on the whiteboard here. And some of these goals will tie into as we look at building your five year strategic plan. But really just talking about goal number one here. Looking and evaluating your current space and future requirements for city operation and community needs there. I think this is a good time, you know, last year you, there's a lot of discussion with the council, you know, and you've done a fantastic job addressing the wastewater treatment plant. Looking at, you know, trying to keep that within cost controls and how you manage that going forward with your boundary, with your valley engineering. But also looking at your water reservoir, your infrastructure around that. But now I think you got to kind of take a step back and start thinking about like. As you grow as a city here, right? You had a presentation, I think, last month or regarding your facility needs here, right? So I think now's the time to end this discussion within your infrastructure. One of the most important things too is your facilities, right? So understanding where are you going to be in five years and what you're going to need. You're hiring staff, you're growing here. And really good healthy conversations to start thinking about like, what is your community going to need here? What I've seen in other cities, you know, when they look at the opportunities to thinking about how you're going to expand your city hall, what are those needs that you need for your community here, right? So something to think about, I think for your council to discuss today is, you know, maybe having an open house or town hall. And seeing what your community needs, you know, do you want to have a community center? Do you, how does your community feel about having a? A new city hall, you're going to need that. You got to address that because in five years, you're going to definitely outgrow what you have here, right? So thinking about what that looks like from that standpoint there. When other, you know, facilities that might be critical, think about, you're, you know, you're addressing the infrastructure, but buildings are. A need that you're going to have to address from that standpoint there. And then visiting some of these other cities that are similar in size and. We talked about Carlton earlier, so Carlton just finished a new city hall. They got a CLT laminated building. They have a community center in their hall. They have a police substation within their hall, so. As you grow, maybe there's opportunities to think about, what are those programming characteristics that your community needs? And that could be something considered about. You know, really identifying those needs as you kind of go through this year. And then think about maybe in the following year, do you start doing some programming, right? Where would that be? Those are some things to really think about from there. So I'll stop with that and just. The other thing too is I think now really thinking about the water losses usage, we talked about that. Any other type of infrastructure goals that you want to add up here onto this list here would be important from there, so. Thoughts on? Facility assessments, sir?
Well, I saw your, your community, you know, talking about city hall. I'm very much into building a city hall that accomplishes every facet of what we're looking at here. We have got a town that is growing fast and we need the facility, we need the internet capability, we need everything that. Today's market offers to be competitive and to be able to put together teams that we need and everything. So I think police station. City Hall and any other organization that we can put in there that makes sense. A community city hall. But what I'd like us to focus on, and I know we've never talked about this, but I think it would really add to the whole. View of our city. We sit right on the top of the river. We've talked about this millions of times. We need something to draw people in and at the same time, we need a place for city hall that makes sense. That head of the river that we've always talked about, where the fox is now. I don't know what's happening with the Zand deal. It may or may not go through at this point, but capturing that headway. Coming into Estacada, putting a new city hall, community facility there. Capitalizing on green dollars that are coming into Estacada such as CLT and Glulam. To build it, make it an interpretive center as well as a city hall. So it accomplishes a lot more than just a city hall. Along with police station, but not a holding facility. In that, I think the holding facility would be in a different location. But actually putting this, the, the police station, some other entities that we're looking at combining into that. All there and making that our headway, our gateway into Estacada, our gateway to the, to the river. Everything that we've asked for, make it a, a meeting center, you know, where you have a large area for people to gather for the river. Not only have you beautified that area, but you've actually accomplished more than three or four different items. You've put a gathering place. You've put a square, you've got city hall, you've got the gateway to the river and you're talking about that whole new. Gateway into the river area that you, we've already got plans for. So you've captured that whole thing. Plus, it puts future aspirations of putting a walkway across to Lake Shore. Combining that to the Broadway we already have and the Lake Shore Adventure, right? So I think it's a selling point. The state is looking for green dollar investment. They want, they're looking at. Our climate change, they're looking at the whole thing. So the money's there. It's just a matter of capturing that and it gives us a focal point and an identity. We're the green spot. We don't have a lot of heavy industrial, we have light industrial. So we're staying within that mark. We're in the gateway to the forest. We have the headway to the Clackamas. So everything comes downstream from us. It, it just adds that whole, that whole view. And I think that. Is a great idea. It accomplishes everything we're talking about and makes a perfect gateway into the river. So. That's my.
If that, if that property doesn't, you know, if that doesn't pan out, I mean, with the, could we do that on the Ondole, Ondole property?
Well, I think as a community building, it would be too small. Because you don't have the area space you'd need to combine everything, whereas you do on the other location. So that would be my concern with the Ondole, Ondole. We can't combine everything on that patch, even if you weigh it out with parking and everything, it's not going to be big enough.
Could we do it between there and here though?
Yeah, I, I, I don't know. I, I don't know, but I, I think keeping it in one area would be our focus here, so.
I'm a different subject, I was going to let you guys finish up.
Okay, you got anything you might add to?
No, just, yeah, I was just thinking of properties.
When we were listening to Brian on, from Mackenzie on Monday night, he said that's one of the things, next things that they can do is they can take. Some different sites, two or three different sites and kind of cost them out and look at the size and what can be there. So maybe that's one of the things we want to take a next step on, but maybe before that, you, you might want to have a town hall or a open house. Engage the community about it.
You know, just really thinking about having a town hall. This year would be a great goal setting to talk about just what you said and to gather that input, you know, what would this community like to see within that facility? I think, you know, you have the, the shared services with Clackamas, you know, sheriff's department, you know, I'm sure as you grow, having that type of services. We've seen several city halls have that community shared space for events, which is a great idea. And I think just. Setting a council goal, thinking of having an open house and, and at the same time, at that goal, you could update them on where you're at with the water, right? Where you're at with the sewer, what's happening there, but it could be an infrastructure summit just to have a town hall to bring that awareness and then. Gathering that feedback this year and then setting a goal, maybe going to visit two or three city halls. As this, as the council here, just to, and visit with those counselors. And learn about some of the challenges, struggles, funding that they went through to get there, right? That's just getting out ahead of it now and understanding it's just going to, you're going to, you're going to, it's going to be here before we know it in five years. And you're going to need it. So something to think about from that standpoint there, so.
On the same topic, but I don't want to cut you off.
Oh, I just wanted to know if, when they bring the ideas of what we need to, as far as facilities, if they could give us an average cost per square foot. For a replacement building. So like they're bringing us a recommendation for four hundred thousand dollars in fixes. But we can build a new facility for five hundred and fifty. I just want to have that information available. So maybe one for like office spaces. One for warehouses and whatever different types of building classifications that we might be looking at that our facilities fit into. What the replacement cost per square foot is.
I just, I really agree with the mayor's point that we would need to get. State dollars because I think passing any bond measure prior to the school district, passing their bond measure is going to be. Incredibly difficult. I mean, I, I think if we were to get polling. The number one priority would be school facilities. And so just thinking about like the fin- financing of this, because I'm, I'm doing a project in another city right now. That's, that's going to be, it's, it's going to need to be other monies rather than bonding.
Yeah, it's a great idea.
Tools always lose money.
Win bonds but lose money.
They lose so much money.
I, I do like the point on the interpretive center that you brought up because, but that, I think learning. Challenges on the financing as you go, but if you do the town hall, talk to these other cities. Start, you know, we could start building that case, like you said, to find the funding there. So Jonathan?
I, I think that we would agree though on the property. Per se, how we get there or whatnot, I, I'm with you. I agree with you. Town hall, get a gauge of what people need, how big of a facility, but. I think without that, without a doubt, we could agree that the people of this community very much care about that particular piece of property. And I think if we're looking at investment opportunities, we're looking at capturing real estate or something like that. I think that regardless, we have a conversation about doing something bold that we know is a big investment, maybe. But that's also a big investment into our community as well because we know that they care about that now. In the interim, that could be created into park space or something. We talked, you guys were talking about hotel allowances and things like that, but I think what could we creatively do? To go after like grant money and other things like that specifically, what could we creatively do to acquire the property first? Like, could we get it so that it's ours? And then from there.
Because it's step by step.
It is anyway, yeah, but let's start acquiring and, and own the asset, right, before we even develop it.
Yeah, it, it's, you know, you can't control what you don't own and, and that was one of the things I was worried about with, with some of the ideas across the way. But the idea of, of like a city center, city hall, maybe with enough comfort space though, that we could actually bring other entities out here. Put the, put the boutique hotel at the other end, so they have to walk along. It seems like a real attractive way to have a real nice place for, for organizations to have some kind of retreat or whatever. Or if you get the outdoors people, they're, you know. I don't know the, the way, but if there was a way to where they could actually walk to the launch or something like that. I mean, just so many wonderful things that we could do. But I think to Jonathan's point, it starts with you can't control what you don't own. And so. What does the city, what's the, the open, or not even open real estate? What's the real estate inventory look like for the city? And then what could we do to, to move forward with that?
So my hearing that we'd like to have, do you want to set goals on this for this year or do you want to wait till next year? Question number one, should we set goals for, a goal for involving this for this year?
My recommendation was we move on that immediately, whether it's grant or whatnot, but I would say that if the council could agree. I'm not, I don't speak for all of us, right? If we all could come to an agreement, I think that we look at. Let's have a conversation. If that falls through, how do we bring Sam to the table? What does he want from it? That's reasonable. Tell him to work with the community and a longstanding member. He knows this, okay? And tell him we have a way, potentially we could have a way forward here that's palatable to the entire community, including the one that he served for the last three decades, you know?
Should we do a, should we do an open house like with an infrastructure summit, like you said, infrastructure summit, give them an update on? Summit, like you said, infrastructure summit, give them an update on sewer, water. City facilities and gather some feedback from them at the same time. Is that, am I? Saying that, or how would you, how would we start? What would our goal be?
Well, I, I would think, aren't we waiting for the facilities plan to come back or is this before we even know if we need a new city hall? We're gonna go buy the property for, are we waiting on the report to come back saying we need one or no?
I, what I was hearing was a consensus that we're going to be needing one. And so then just knowing how real estate has been. If we think we're gonna go that way, then moving on real estate, uh, sooner rather than later, um. Could be cost factor.
With the caveat that it, I, I'm, by the way, I, I agree with your idea on the building it there. If it meets, I'm with you. Uh, but with the caveat that that could be multipurpose, right? I mean. If we own the property, there's park space, there's water access. I mean, and there's different, there's different uses there, but it would be to own the, the, the front. River space.
You're saying making this a separate goal from whether we need a city hall or not.
So we could explore, explore property acquisition for future city use.
Meet like a potential facility needs.
Yeah, but, but separated, separated from the, the city hall conversation for now.
So maybe explore this, that one could be explore property acquisition. I don't know where the columns go on this, John. I got, oh, and it's not even writing well. Explore property acquisition for future city use. But also, do you, do you want to bring, I feel like the community kinda needs to come in on this to see. And I think I was getting the, the. I was getting the impression that Mackenzie was saying it was pretty expensive to rehab this building.
She made that very clear.
Yeah, so. It's a like, it's likely that we would go elsewhere, but this could be one of the sites when we do get that report back. This could be one of the sites they evaluate is if we stayed here and how they would make this fit, but. Um, if we do find out the community would like some, uh, community space, that Wade Creek room is in use every single weekend, multiple times. Um, and that if they do want a police substation, maybe they don't. I kinda think they, they would like having a substation out here. Um, but, but do they? I'm just kind of assuming that right now. So. We're looking at in general, explore property acquisition for, cause we've talked about additional city parking. Um, there's things that we might wanna try to take opportu- be ready to take opportunities when they arise. There might be some opportunities that are already closed, but. Other opportunities might come up. Um. And then do you want to have a, an open house on the?
Absolutely.
I think you should, you need community.
What do you call that? Infrastructure summit or?
Well, we need to, we need to understand the status of what's going on over there, because if they're going to. If we're having discussions about acquisition and then they're coming to us with a, uh, application. That's gonna create a lot of legal issues. So like we, I think all of us have heard rumors about what's going on, but none of us know. And so, um. And then it's kind of, there's kind of multi-tracks, like if. Someone could do like a, something similar to that Ace Hotel where it's adaptive reuse of a mid-century. Uh, facility. Um, you know, that's probably financially more feasible than a new hotel, because they don't have any of the finances, it's gonna be an issue. But like there are a variety of tools that we could explore, getting grants from Travel Oregon. Um, but it's just, we need to understand the status of it first.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, I mean, but we're, even if say Lake Shore.
Yeah.
Like that one in particular, I get, but like, I just mean in general, like what, you know, on delay is another one. We talk about parking. Uh, the hotel, boutique hotel space, and another thing like. It's something that we could acquire that could potentially make us money, or we could hold as an asset, that's something that's not gonna depreciate on us.
Or the giant parking lot between the two.
Yeah, um, yeah. So I'm just, let's look at, you know, season some. Stuff to like, kind of grow the vision, build it, right? That way we don't lose it, cause we can shape it all we want, but if. Quite frankly, like they said, if, if it doesn't, if we don't own it, then whatever happens, happens.
We're still on infrastructure goals?
Yes.
Bouncing all over the place up here, but.
Okay, uh, natural gas.
On infrastructure, uh. How realistic is it if we were able to get the testing equipment to be able to test for I and I in our entire water system in twenty, in twelve months?
Waste water?
Not waste, it's the water that, the.
All the water, I know it's wastewater, but.
Coming back into the thirty seven percent that we're trying.
Waterly, water loss. Yeah.
Oh, I think Kurt's budgeting, he wants to budget a robust amount. But it's putting, we need to put acoustics everywhere. And then it's either us implementing it and going out fixing leaks. Or we hire a company to do it. One, I have a crew of seventy per six people. So in two of those apart, so it's.
Yeah.
It's not like I can.
Or have the ability to maybe hire some temporary employees that just specifically do that testing and when they're done, that position.
Yeah, no, and then the, a lot of the testing is done remotely. So you put the testing equipment on and then it's just, it's data that it gives you. It sends ping between one valve to another. And there's certain frequencies that picks up and that's a water leak or it's something, it most time it is water leak. And that's not how they identify.
I got a few steps on that that I just want to hit for the water losses. I want to be able to identify. Where we're losing water at in the entire system within a year. Somehow at least find out where all the leaks are at.
Yeah.
And then, um, produce a list of all projects needed. The estimated cost benefit ratio for them for each project and then assign priority level so we can get a, a plan. Together, which ones we're gonna attack first. And if you take the estimated amount of loss and the cost to fix it. You'll get a ratio number and then you should be able to number all the projects. From highest to lowest and whoever's got the biggest bang for the buck, you should group those together and hit those first. Cause it's gonna reduce your loss the greatest amount for the penny.
Come up with a water reduction loss plan?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think that's great.
That was a lot of details in there, but so set up a system to identify the leaks, contract for repairs. Or do what I.
And prioritize, prioritize projects.
Okay.
Do you need a step ladder?
Well, the good thing is you won't have to write up there anymore.
Okay.
Any others on infrastructure?
And the I and I, we need to probably set a goal on the I and I too. I'm not sure what that goal would be, um. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
What do they use for that? For testing for that?
Uh, there's flow meters. The problem is they're not as accurate as. Some, most of the time it's just us going out and verifying. Popping manhole lids and taking a note and dry times and then taking a note and non-dry times and seeing the flow difference in the pipe. So if you have a quarter, quarter full pipe, when it's dry and then it's three quarters in full, you know, you got quite a bit of I and I in that line. But the, we just did a bunch on Lake Shore and we were pulling a lot of sand out. Which means the concrete pipes are deteriorating and they're starting to break apart, so they're so ruined. So it's just. Kind of a hit or miss kind of thing. But a lot of, a lot of town's been slip lined. And I think a lot of our I and I is, uh, private side.
Do you think that the problem, the deeper you go, uh, underground, the more significant the problem is?
No, I don't think so. I think it's just old, old town. We have a lot of trees in town. And then you have concrete pipes and those roots like to find the cracks. And every connection, it's, there's a four foot chunk of concrete pipe with a rubber gasket and it's just stuffed in there. No grout, nothing like that. And so those roots find it and then the groundwater gets in and it's just game over.
You can also smooth it, pressurize the system with smoke and watch, see where it comes out.
So we'll, we'll work on the water loss, we'll work on the I and I, gonna break ground on the sewer, on the wastewater plant.
Definitely falls in there. So for infrastructure would, would, would this be the appropriate for natural gas? I know that we had, we brought them to the table. In November, I understand that. But with the energy directives and stuff like that changing in the country, I think that it'd be worth keeping an eye on to see. If we could find a way or find subsidization or. Private funding to plug that natural gas line from Sandy to here. At least to our. At least to the industrial area to help us, you know, attract more and bigger.
Yeah, I couldn't agree more. I think one of the things with the Economic Development Commission that we're gonna, you know, bet out with them is, with the next step with Northwest Natural would be to. Really come up with what the cost is to do the feasibility study, right? So. I think working with them to come up as a good goal for that, to be able to bring that to council. And then it's also looking at like. You know, where that gas line has to come, who could be other partners in doing that feasibility study, but that's what really needs to happen next year.
Yeah. And what's the, what's the realistic timeline for something like that, Mr. Wilders? Like, I mean, from your experience, what would be, what would be fair constraints? I think it. It's important that we set deadlines on this stuff going forward this year so that.
I think that'd be a good goal for, you know, to have for completed in twenty twenty five is. What is the feasibility, you know, to do the plan? And then identify, once we have that cost for Northwest Natural, what it would cost for them to, to do the plant and the engineering, right? Then it's a discussion of how you're gonna fund it, right? Cause it's gonna be several thousand dollars to fund it. Is there other partners in the area because of the way that line would come? What would be the funding?
Did you mean million dollars?
Well, I'm, I'm talking the, the, the line's gonna cost millions of dollars, right? But the first step you have to do with the gas company is the plan. And that's gonna cost several thousand dollars, could be fifty, hundred thousand. I don't know for sure, but. But getting that number from Northwest Natural and then saying, okay, this is what it's gonna cost. Is that something council wants to spend city dollars or can we find, you know, that gas line has to come through. Unincorporated areas of the county, other parts of cities. So like, how's, who's gonna, who's benefit and from the, at the end user, right? So thinking about that too is a funding strategy, right? So first is identifying what it would cost. You know, Northwest National come to us and say it's gonna cost X amount of hours to do the engineering. And then we're gonna have to say, okay. Does the city want to budget for that or pay for that? Or do we want to try and find a coalition or, you know, partners to help with that, right? So. Um, that's something to think about, so.
Can I ask a question? Um, because the state is going a different direction. I, we were talking about climate and down here, but. The federal dollars are going towards energy. Now, can we tap into federal dollars? To look at the study that we need to get natural gas out of there? Is there a possibility that there would be opening for federal dollars at that point?
There could be. I mean, I think we'll just have to, you know, continue to have conversations with Northwest Natural. To find out what's available out there to, you know, and other partners, so.
The county's doing an industrial land study right now.
Yeah.
To Jamie Stas, and he's doing that.
Yeah.
So, and they went for a metro grand. So it might be possible to piggyback on that.
I like that idea. Yeah. So. I remember when, um, they came in and talked about the water treatment plant. And areas of vulnerability, you know, talking about pressure, fire and all that kind of stuff. And one of the other things, uh. Where we were vulnerable was redundancy.
Yeah.
And so has there, is there been, is there a plan? Uh, of, of what we would need to do in, in order to protect ourselves from. Be it a, a natural or manmade, um. Uh, break in, in our water, something like that. And I don't know, is there a plan of, or an I, idea of where we would need to do things?
Be covered under like a hazard mitigation plan or?
I mean, the, the water master plan does have, have some information on redundancies and, and.
And the fixes that are coming for the redundancy thing, Kurt addressed it with, they were running the redundant line to one of the major areas that didn't have. Redundancy, right? The North City Residential, is it?
I'm thinking John is talking about like if the water plant can't provide water, is that what you're talking about? Like if, if the line, one of the lines goes out, then we have another line to supply.
I remember the, him, him talking about the existing, um, the existing facilities. They're lacking redundancy. I, I think I did remember him saying that in the new stuff, they're building these redundancies, but there, there may be gaps. In the, in the older stuff. So that's what I'm asking about is, is the existing.
It's mostly in our new part of town and redundancy is that having, right now we only have one high level water reservoir. So getting the second water reservoir constructed is a redundancy and then, um. Correct me if Don, if I'm wrong, but doing, making sure that when the new subdivisions are, um, designed that they are, they do have. Like circular flow or?
Yeah, you put loops in, so like the new Hill extension gives, uh, Cascadia Ridge another loop. Where it only had, there's only one line feeding five hundred homes. Now there's, yeah, that redundancy, you have another line, so we have a main break. And that's what Kurt's trying to push further and further out of town. The same problems with our, uh, industrial campus. We only have one main. We need to have something else across the highway to help if something happens.
May I identify those in the water plan and then the fixes for them are identified in the water plan too, John?
Okay.
If it's something outside of that wasn't identified there, there's not a plan for it yet, but all the ones that they identified, they're planning together for it.
So it's really implement the, the water master plan, the new, the new one that we just, is that kinda?
Yeah.
Implement.
Okay, moving on to the next.
Okay, I know, you know, counselor, I know Jerry, you were passionate about this last year and this kind of builds on the. Economic growth of the downtown here, looking at our underutilized downtown properties here, right? So. Continue to, uh, engage with the, you know, we've engaged with ODOT, we've talked to Reliance Connect, so. Again, we talked about earlier, we have, you know, large facilities down here that have. Warehousing or, you know, services and looking at how we can move those properties forward here. So. Ties underneath the, uh, economic development here. So wanted to get your guys' uh, feedback on that and thoughts from there too, so.
How many properties are there identified right now?
Well, Reliance says three, right? And then ODOT's.
ODOT has one.
We've talked to ODOT, um, ODOT's again. Uh, a little slower moving, but, uh, they're, they're actually looking at, I think it was three other properties combined, a couple in Portland. So they're interested. Um, they would probably come back, uh, mid-June, I think is when they were thinking about talking about. Uh, what they're gonna do with this facility here, thinking about potentially relocating like to Sandy, how that would locate together. From that standpoint there, so that could be a great property for. Uh, thinking about how that could get repositioned and what that would look like from that, from that standpoint, but. They also have a couple of properties in Portland, so they have to go through a whole process on, you know, disposition of property and assets, but they're looking at combining. Together, so, uh, early conversations are, you know, at least started on that standpoint there. I think Reliance, uh. You know, they realize, uh, as they're growing, like there's opportunities, uh, where could they relocate and what would that look like? Uh, I think just finding what could be an opportunity for them on their property, you know, and be able to. Reposition that from that standpoint there too, so. The other thing I think too is, uh, you know, we've got food trucks scattered all over the community here. So thinking about like, uh, you know, things that have been done in, uh, Camby, you know, they took their city library. Put in a food truck pavilion there with a, with a tap house, uh, Oregon City Borough, and you've seen that too. Those are very successful venues, also good ways to incubator start the areas down here, so. Uh, we've seen programs like Portland Estates MRed program, you know, do some feasibility studies on that, so. Uh, those are ways to look at, uh, maybe combining and creating some incubator space too from that standpoint there, so. Love to hear your feedback on that.
No, I, it's been Sandy, they did a thing through their city where they, uh, did a grant program for those coverings. For their food areas, for their food trucks over in Sandy, and it was really successful. They did it in several different locations.
Yeah.
Is there something like that we could set up here to do the same thing? I mean, we've got several food court areas around town. But wouldn't it make sense? I mean, in the area that we're looking at now, which is over off of, uh, Broadway there. To actually have a covering and turn that into a more. You know, better use as well food cart area, so that they would have a covered area and, and be able to, to accommodate people over there. Maybe that would be something.
So what, what I would, what I would like to see is, you know, again, we've got these properties across the highway that are not. Not being used. We've got the, the giant parking lot or. Paved area between, between the two, uh. Strip malls over there. Um, you know, we've got, and then we've got the on delay, on delay property. I would love to see one of those properties used. For a, uh, a food cart pavilion, you know, a, a centralized place for all the food carts to go. Um, you know, um, you know, over there, and then we could keep the, that parking lot, a parking lot for city parking. You know, cause the, those businesses, those businesses over there, um, I know the jujitsu, um. The jujitsu place utilizes the parking lot in the back, um, uh, at least a little bit of the parking lot, um. But that, that, that's, we, we've talked about city parking and that's prime real estate. You know, downtown parking. Um, I'd like to see the food carts move to, you know, like I said, another location. And then keep that as city parking, you know?
Well, this, is this, are you, is the council in general supportive of that goal as it's kind of written there? Maximize use of downtown properties, support economic development and community engagement, um, especially? Food truck plaza or?
So are we, are we allowing community engagement in with this, utilizing downtown properties? Cause.
I think that rather than community engagement, like, um, communicating to the community, um, is engaging them like, uh, maybe it would be community vitality or something. Or having, creating some way to, to utilize these underutilized properties for economic development. And then, um, having the community be able to gather down here.
Do, do, is that kind of what we were, is that kind of what you were hearing?
You know, just really, I think the goal for us to, from councils, you know, direction to continue on having these discussions with the larger property owners is, is, you know, we know ODOT, we know Reliance. Also, as the council interests in exploring opportunities for a food cart pavilion, which could be to Jerry's point, maybe it's across street, maybe it's over. But I think that would be helpful to try and accomplish in the next year, right? You're going to have to continue those conversations. ODOT's going to be a long conversation, it's going to be a long process, but you know, over the years, you slowly chip away at it and we can find hopefully a spot for them to relocate. Out of downtown with Duster Park or Sandy, uh, they're in our Duster Park right too. So there's a lot of opportunities there for that, right? I think to Jerry's point is like, I think be helpful, uh, Portland State University has a MRR program, uh, the students could look at exploring some opportunities, uh, for like a food cart pavilion, where could that be located at and bring that to council, you know, that's just gives you some creative ideas for that from, from an incubator standpoint there too, so.
So I wrote maximize use of downtown properties, especially continue to engage with the large property owners and explore opportunities for food truck plaza, I should say, et cetera, maybe because it might be other good uses too. Is that? Wow, that, that's what John was hearing and wrote up there, but is that resonating today to continue with that or?
Before we make it a priority for the food cart thing, I'd like us to go around and just ask each one of the food carts if we had a park, if they would move into it first. Cause some of them don't like to be around competition like that. Some of them choose to be kind of isolated, but just make sure that we're working towards something that they'll, they'll actually use before we start building a food cart village.
Right, so it probably would be a, a private development, right? The food, the plaza would be private development, but that would be part of it would be.
Get a survey, that's a great point, get a survey done from them.
Okay, I would also say we're going to need to engage with the business owners because they're, the property owners, because they're paying rent. All those food carts are paying rent to those property owners. So if we move them all to a plaza, now suddenly they're losing a lot of passive income. It might be something that they, we want to engage with them about prior to that.
Yeah.
I was going to spell gauge, but I don't know how, so I'm going to write, look at interest from current food trucks. Um, but yeah, that's true, it could be, it could pull revenue from other, from property owners we didn't intend to. There could be an impact that we didn't intend to do, but again, interest from current food trucks. Discuss with property.
Usually the successful carts that don't like going into those places the most because they're going to, they're the ones that are going to feel the impact. The people that aren't performing very well are going to get more exposure.
And I, I know the, um, the, the ownership of time travelers was interested in being the top house for, you know, a food, food truck pavilion.
Interesting.
So they might be the people that would want, that we would.
They'd be the anchor for it, yeah.
Yeah, we have another alternate, but if you go up on, uh, the viewpoint location that was up there, he's operating out of the green space, but he's selling the whole restaurant and everything. He'd also be a good opponent to that, I think, as a brew house mixed with.
Food trucks.
Food trucks. As a secondary alternative.
Okay. The next one, Sadie, please.
All right, so yeah, we'll move on to the next one. And then these are going to come, we're going to take what we hear today, put it into words the best we can from what we think we're hearing, bring it back to you and then let you narrow that down or, you know, revise as needed out of council. Hopefully you, we try to get it as close as possible to what we think you're hoping for and then we'll, but we'll bring it back, so it'll be approved later.
All right, yes, uh, number three was addressing inconsistencies, challenging, uh, more in the municipal code. And, you know, Melanie talked about this, I heard you, uh, everyone talking about it, the, uh, you know, Peter talked about blighted blocks, uh, we talked about cannabis. Uh, there are several things, kind of little things that Elena maybe wants to talk about a little too, but.
Yeah.
Outside of municipal code, I mean, within your municipal code, outside your development code, that really need to be probably, you know, brought forward and it could be like on a monthly or it could be on a quarterly. But, uh, we want to kind of bet that out with the council here today, because I, I think it's some, just some regular housekeeping that needs to be done. But kind of get your feedback on, you know, we could easily staff could, could put together like, uh, over the next year, these are, you know, each month, some of the municipal codes that we want to address and get cleaned up and brought forward. And then she'll, you'll know ahead of time, okay, this code is coming, this is what we're going to be talking about, that could be some, you know? We want to hear your feedback on how you want to kind of address that from that standpoint there.
Well, my question is to, would, would staff be, would the staff have the capacity to have a monthly? Um, you know, uh, have something ready for us monthly?
A lot of these are super simple, like one of them is define poultry, you know, because, because somebody is like raising quail, is this counted as poultry? It, a lot of them are very simple, there's a few that are going to require a lot more conversation and, and we can kind of stagger those at times where staff has capacity. But a lot of them are just very, very simple.
I'd be down for monthly.
Whatever makes it easiest for you guys to update them, whatever blocks that makes it easy to do them.
Yeah, so we could take them chapter by chapter and when I look at the code, like there are quite a few chapters that don't even have anything. Um, I didn't include all the chapters, but I think, uh, twelve, thirteen, ten, they have nothing in them. So when we do it chapter by chapter, we're going to break it up into little blocks that I think would be easier for you to tackle and us to tackle.
I just want to, I want to point out, I got to, I know Mike, you get to deal with code quite a bit, but, uh, I got to work with Alan a little bit this year. And, uh, I will say that I was impressed with our ability to find gaps in code, be able to work with it as a team and then come up with a solution rather than it be, uh, a hard point, right? To get around, so I do want to commend you on the work that we have been doing. I know we can be very critical up here in this, this is goal setting, but I do want to say that we're doing, I feel like something very right in that. If there's things like that, I would like to continue to see that happen where you guys just bring it right to us, like when you see it, like, hey, I was doing this, this really didn't make sense. I checked the planning commission, they kind of thought that was really clean and I thought it was streamlined and it, and it took away a lot of the weight process and I, I just would like to see, can we retain that?
Yeah, thanks, that's good feedback, thanks.
Yeah, and, and this specifically what we're talking about is not in the development code, so it's not stuff Alan's dealing with. It is things like, um, defining poultry, uh, burning garbage, camping, uh, sidewalk sales. You know, there's things that, that have pro- cropped up over the years that are just little things. And because they're not in the development code, they don't require public hearings, they don't have to go before planning commission, you could make a decision at one council meeting. And so it's, we could tackle them pretty quickly, I think, and, and get through most of them.
So we'd get your opinion on how that fits the vision and value or, you know, some things are just flat out inaccurate anymore. Um, and so that would be just a quick change, then we bring in ordinance, you would, um, approve an ordinance, you'd do your usual two times of approving an ordinance. So people could come in, they would know it's coming up, see it come in and, um, could come and talk about it before it has its final approval, but it wouldn't be as complex as.
Yeah, we don't have to do the public noticing, you don't have to send it to DLCD, it doesn't have to go before the planning commission, it's, it's a lot easier in the non-development code.
So is this where, earlier we were talking about cannabis and whether the, the fans were being, is this where you would put in, uh, inspection rules or something like that?
So we looked, yeah, we looked at, right now cannabis is in the development code. And we looked at, that's one thing we looked at when we were having all these issues, can we move it to building code? Cause if we moved it to building code, it would allow us to have inspections more. Cause right now it's, it's in development code, which is in land use. If it's in building code, then our building code professionals can do the inspections.
That's a little more, one of the more complex ones.
Yeah, that one is a little more complex, that would probably be just a meeting on its own, but, but most of them are pretty small and simple.
Okay, so you're okay if we start prioritizing those and bringing them to you, we'll work through them, we should be able to get through them all in a year, we stay on track. Um, and then, uh, yeah, chapter by chapter, probably once a month, I feel like once a month, a little change is easier unless, we, we could talk about it as staff, staff and then line them out. Um, cause I know Sadie does the updating of the code and municode as a city recorder. Uh, and so we could figure out how they, how it'd be best to bring it to you and then just start working our way through it.
Would it just go into the consent agenda?
I, I think, I think a lot of them probably like defining poultry or, uh, I think one of them is like business license fees, don't go to the, the fire department. So that probably could be in the consent agenda, but there, I know there's ones that you guys are going to want to talk about.
There's one, the fire district wanted us to un-adopt the fire code, um.
But I think you, uh, you know, Calmerac, I think you could have the discussion in the next meeting, could come back on consent, you could have a.
That's a, that's a good, is that?
Or do more than one, a grouping of them versus just one.
Oh, okay.
The easier ones group a lot of them together.
Group them by the ease of passage, okay, we could do that, yeah.
Right, just to keep it simple, we might need to put it in the council business, um, but you wouldn't have to have a long discussion about it if it was clear and you agreed.
I noticed sign of, uh, uh, E, um, about sidewalk sales. And I thought we had, I thought that had come up and I thought there was something that prevents sidewalk sales.
No, there, there's, there's code that says you can't sell, um, you can't have sales without a business license. But there's nothing specifically, the only thing that addresses sidewalk sales, like the time, place, manner is in relation to outside restaurant service. So, so when we're talking about like a business having a sidewalk sale or even, you know, people setting up on a street corner for a sidewalk sale, we want to make sure that we say, hey, you have to, whatever it is you guys decide on, get a permit. Um, make sure that you are allowing ADA accessibility, you can't block the sidewalk for this sale, those kind of things should be in the code and they're not currently.
There, there is, people are not allowed to, um, I can't issue a business license to somebody to sell straight off the sidewalk if they don't. They have to have the, a private property attached to that unless they get a vendor's license or a, I can't remember what that's called, a solicitor's license where they're usually like going door to door or something like that. But just to set up on the sidewalk, there's really no way to issue that business license. So anybody who does that is being contacted and notified they need to go outside city limits if that's their intended mode of operation. But this would be, this would address other issues as well.
This would address, you, you know, if, if, if people have a business and they're just pulling their stuff out on the sidewalk, we want to make sure that they're leaving enough space for people to use the sidewalk and leave access on the sidewalk. And really this kind of came up because somebody called and asked, do I need a permit for a lemonade stand? And I'm like, no, you don't need a permit for a lemonade stand, but we want to make sure that that's clear in the code so that it doesn't get to where, where, you know, the Girl Scouts can't sell their cookies. Yet we want to make sure that there's a way for that to happen.
Yeah, that's, it brings up interesting topics, so we'll, we'll organize them and bring them to you if you're willing to work with those with us. And then the development code, that is what, um, uh, that probably should go here too, right? Cause we're going to continue to work through the development code, um, but that's going to be a different process.
Yeah, so right now we have an RFP out to acquire a consultant who's going to help us prioritize the, um, just go through the whole development code and basically figure, we have, we have ourselves have a huge list of things that we've identified, but, um, once we get a consultant, they'll be able to look at things that we're not finding and then.
This is that clear and objective part?
Uh, well, that would be, it would be identifying things like an objective, um. Uh, I mean, it's just basically like, um, the code audit, um.
Okay.
They're just identifying things that need to be changed. And then the second phase would, would be to actually draft the changes and then, and then adopt those.
Plus the state keeps changing the law.
Yeah, so a lot of it is, is, is this still legal according to what the state says?
Yeah, that's the clear objective part.
Okay.
Okay, we want to put our goals for the development code now on here.
Um, I think there's another slide, is there?
Outside of the development.
And for, uh, front edge and development code there.
Oh yeah, there's more, yeah, there are more.
Five, yeah, number five.
Okay, we'll come up to more development code that we could prioritize, this is for the general code audit, okay?
So the next one, Sadie, please. Okay, uh, so rightsizing the council, they has on a committee side, it says here, so just to ensure that we have effective council committee operations, appropriate member engagement, uh, reviewing, you know, some of those things for you guys to talk about today is kind of, looking at the current committee structure, roles, member sizes, uh, where the liaison committees are under or over resourced there. And just, you know, again, sometimes it's tough on some of these committees just to have full participation there. And just to, what we also have here is a slide, uh, for, so the planning commission has zero vacancies, current vacancies on parks and recs, zero arts, zero, libraries, zero, budget has three, downtown zero, diverse equity has three, traffic and public safety, uh, two, economic development, one. Lot of committees, so opening it for discussion on the committees and councils there, so. Thoughts on it? And you want to combine?
Having that at the next meeting, right?
Yep.
No, discussion next meeting. About the committees.
Do you want to discuss, you want to put that, you want to have a workshop for discuss, to discuss committees or did you want to give some? Um, today I'd kind of like to, I guess we could do this at a workshop, but I want to know how you all would like to have, to see participation as a liaison. Cause some people are very, we used to have you just sit in the audience and then we had to start sitting at the tables and then some people are very active with their committees and others are not. And it doesn't really say, and so I can't really say, I think that, the, you know, you should have less or more interaction with the committees that you're being the liaison to. But I would like for you to all decide how much, how much do you participate in the committee?
Are you suggesting that a council member being involved as a liaison and, and engaging or being bought in or dynamic in the conversation is a, an issue?
I am suggesting that.
Yeah. Huge issue, why would you have a, why would you have a committee full of people from the community and then go there and impact what they're talking?
I don't think we direct, but I think you can, you could entertain conversation, right? Make sure that you reference that it make, that it meets council vision or no?
So my, my, my take on it, my, sorry, um, is, what, what I try to do is, you know, sit there and listen to the direction of, the direction the committee's going. And if the committee is steering away from council goals, or if they're steering down a road that's, that, uh, of more resistance, I try to steer them back towards council goals or down a road of least resistance.
You don't take your counselor hat off? Cause that happens on record too, I'm not saying you, but that does happen on record as well. So if we're addressing things like this, let's go across the board.
Yeah.
What you mean by taking your counselor hat off?
We've had people make announcements, I'm here not as a counselor, but I'm saying this as a pope, like as a, as a citizen.
No. No, I try, I try to get, I try to get my, it, it, like I said, if, if, if they're going away from council goals, or, or if I know that the road that they're going down is going to cost us more money, or we're going to, or, or is going to be, you know, a lot more resistant. I try to, you know, if, if I know a way to where they can do, you know, go down a road of least resistance or, or save, or save the city money, I try to direct them, you know, try to direct them back in that direction, you know?
And I, I can appreciate, uh, Jerry's perspective here, because we just had a discussion not too long ago about this very thing. But at the same time, commissions and committees have some ideas that I haven't even approached, that I haven't even thought of. And having their live one-on-one ideas come out in a meeting, when they come to us, that's why I've asked for all the committees and commissions to come back to us, the city council. So that I can hear these, because sometimes I'm not thinking on the same level they are and they come up with something totally terrific. And I wouldn't know about that if I was trying to steer them away from it. So I like to hear their uncandid, uh, answers and, and questions via no, no input from council prior to that. Except for what they ask us in a meeting, like if we sit in on a, on a commissioner committee, they ask, well, what, what does the council feel about that? If it's a directed question, I don't mind us answering it, but at the same time, I'd like us to let them come up with these ideas. That's why we put committee and commissions in play, is so they can give us new ways of thinking of things. I'm not always right in the way I think of things as the mayor, but I would sure love to hear somebody who has a better idea, bring that to me. So I would like us to, to play more of a liaison role than a direction role. I don't want to direct them, I want to hear what they have to say, good, bad, or in between, because. Because that's what helps me understand where the community needs to go. So that, that's my perspective on it.
And I agree with that too. We, we are going to assign them what we want them to take a look at and work on. And then they're supposed to bring that back to us. I don't think we should play any part in directing the conversation or steering, because what you'll end up having is. All the committees, all the reports will come back and they'll start sounding a lot like the liaison that is on that committee. Because you're taking their voice away. So just stay as involved as little as possible and then answer questions when they ask something for clarifying and. At least that's how I do it. And then just report on what they're doing. If they're, if they're getting off subject, that should get captured in. The report that you bring back, the liaison comes back, say, well, they're kind of getting off point a lot. Every meeting, they can't stay on point. They're not staying with directives. I think that would get corrected at the council level and not have an individual counselor deciding what they think is inappropriate for them to be talking about. Same thing, because your filter might be different than my filter.
And I'm in agreement with the mayor and, and Mike here. I don't think we should be involved at all. We're taking everything in. We're there to answer some questions, but we shouldn't be directing anything. We shouldn't be redirecting conversation. And I think that it really needs to be written out the rules so we all know what our responsibilities are.
I agree with that. I'm good with that. Yeah.
You know, I just came from the traffic and public safety committee and it's, it's very robust. I mean, we're all sorts of ideas. So many in fact, like when we were doing the speed bump thing, we were like, like this. And so I would look to Jonathan and go, what would be valuable to council or something like that? Because we don't want to just talk about something, we actually want to accomplish something. And not knowing exactly how the council works, what's the best way to serve this up or, or what have you? So we're not being directed, uh, by our, our liaison. But we're also being made more efficient because otherwise we would still be talking about speed bumps. But that's a directed question. You're directing your question towards, that, that's fine. Yeah. That you asked him directly, what, what, what his thought would be. Right. That's different than actually steering or, uh, putting your ideas ahead. Sometimes I could look at him and he rolls his eyes though, and so I know we're off track, so. You know, that's what it is though, getting.
You know, when I, when I started on council there, you know, just like you guys, there's no, there's no directive, there's no written rules, there's no. Uh, anything. So, you know, I, um, I asked questions of, uh. A former chair of the committee that I was liaison for. And, uh, you know, he gave me some ideas on, on how to liaison and I, and I've, I've based, I've based my. Me being a liaison off of, off of that. But if there's a written rule, if there's a written, if there's structure to it, I have absolutely no problem following that structure. And following those rules. I can step back easily and just report, report what I see. I have no problem with that. I'm just saying that, you know, for the past few years as liaison, I've had no direction. So if I've, if I've been doing something wrong, I, I didn't know I was doing it wrong.
I don't know if anybody's doing anything wrong, but that has been in a, it's, it doesn't really say in the council rules.
And Melanie, I want to be clear, I wasn't, I wasn't input, suggesting that you're attacking a specific committee, nothing like that. I'm. And I'm in consensus with all of you in the interest of trying to move this along on topics like that. If there's a written law, then we adhere to it. And sure, it makes it clean and then it's to the point and it's manageable, right?
Sure. Yeah. And I think, like I said, we just had that discussion, me and you, you had that discussion, then I had it with you because we had no directive and that's right. You've brought this here. And I think that's where we're at.
Peter has a comment and then I just.
The one committee where whoever the liaison needs to be careful is the planning commission and that's because. The application might come in front of you as a council. So that's, that's the, if it's a. If it's a legislative item, if it's something of, of citywide concern, then there aren't any concerns about the. The counselor liaison participating in that discussion and helping guide it or what have you. Um, if it's an individual application though, they just need to be really careful. Uh, in what they say and how they interface with the commission because. You know, depending on what they say, they, they could have to then recuse themselves if it comes in front of the council.
Uh, Peter, what are you seeing in some of your other cities you, you've served? Do they have some rules or? One, two-page in our council rules that maybe we could draft up? I'm hearing kind of like you guys would like some, like a one-pager or two-pager kind of.
Or two-sentencer?
For council rules or something could be easily brought forward?
I, I think that just, just what I've seen, you know, is that, um. I've seen that sometimes there's a disconnect between what committees actually do and what they're perceived to do. Or that they're perceived to have some sort of power that they just, they don't have. I won't say the city, but there's a, there's another city where we had, um, a committee that was basically. Kind of directing staff and taking a huge amount of staff time up. And it was creating, it was creating a huge amount of inefficiency and. The views of that committee were not aligned with the views of the city council. But we had a mayor that really did not want to intervene in that because there were some very strong personalities on that. And so. That's the sort of scenario on that committee. That's the sort of scenario where. If we were looking at like the cost benefit analysis or a SWOT analysis, however we're processing it, where. It didn't really make sense for that committee to exist. So I think that, um. You know, that the planning commission is the one where you as counselors need to be really careful. Um, as far as like a team agreement or something like that. Um, we have had issues with a couple of committee members not wanting to sign a team agreement. We recently had an issue with, uh, committee member opining on legal risk. So like of doing something or not doing something which I absolutely disagreed with their analysis and, um, but also. With the planning commission, depending on what people can say, they can actually create legal issues for us down the road. People just need to be really careful that could have happened with the development application that we had where. People were saying, well, I think that city council thinks this or that, and that's not at all what I was hearing. And so like, that's the sort of. That's, I, I hopefully that's been kind of nipped in the bud, I think it has, but that's the sort of thing where a committee can cause. Issues for us. And then, you know, I, I think that the good thing with the communities is oftentimes they bring a lot of energy. And they're passionate about it and that's really a good outlet for commuting members. Um, and then it's just kind of a nuance. Some, some committees kind of need a stronger counselor shove to. Say, hey, we, we really need you guys to look at this. Or we need a robust record so that when we go for this grant. From the state parks or marine board that we can demonstrate there's been a really thorough process. Um, and then some, some committees, you know, that there's dynamic leadership on that committee. And so the counselors can probably just sit back and. Kind of watch it. So it, it depends. I, I wish I could just do bright line rules for you, but it, there's, you know, there's different, different committees need a different hand.
Can we just add that page, the application for the committees? Yeah. Ethics. And then if they don't feel, it's not complete until they've done it. And then we don't, it'll take care of itself in a couple of years.
I'm pretty sure it says on the application, there's like a checkbox that says by submitting this, you agreed to fulfill the, the code of conduct.
I, we can check on that. Yeah.
I thought we had set that up or at least that I.
Thing over the past few years that has been brought up, but yeah, let's make sure that that's a good suggestion that they know. Like we know, they say, there was one other thing, oh, like when they are applying for city council, at one point I think we had on there, realize you're going to have to fill out this. Uh, what is that thing about like your financial? Statement of economic interest, you're going to have to fill that out as a counselor. And so people understand that going in and that they understand as a committee member that, and that way they can look it up. It's pretty innocuous, I think. Um, but if they have a concern about it, they would know they should start a nonprofit instead of joining a city committee. Um, okay. So moving, oh yes.
With liaisons, is this time to talk about, or sorry, are we talking committees?
Let's talk commit, yeah, let's talk committees. Cause we, I think the liaisons, we need to bring you some council rules for how they, how they participate. And then we need to sign up for liaisons real quick.
That's what I was going to ask on the committee thing since we're talking about that.
Yes, let's do that. And then I'd also like to see what workshop you'd like, because we have. We have like our standard committees and then you get down to the three newest committees, DEI, traffic and public safety, economic development. Um, economic development just got started and traffic and public safety has like. They've, they're all, they're like off the launching pad and they've been, you know, had a year or two, a couple of years to get going. DEI has been going for a few years. Um, and I've been, and then we had this discussion at council, um. At the last meeting about concerns about DEI, whether we need that. And if you'd like to have a workshop, we can set that up. I would like to ask if you, maybe the committee has run its course and we don't need a committee per se, but how is the council going to put forth? Their inclusion and accessibility goals, like how, what are some other, if we don't have a committee? How are you going to serve those needs?
Could we, could we change that committee to a community engagement, accessibility and inclusivity committee? Rather than concentrate on D, the DE part of it?
Does that help you, Elena, do grants?
I mean, having a, even if it's an ad hoc committee that I can form for evaluating it would, would be good. I, not having anything would make it more difficult.
For, for anything like a transportation system plan or any of that, the, the benefit is that. If you say, if you have a committee that's vetted it, then you don't have to demonstrate all the steps you took to go through the process. In other cities that don't have a committee like that, we've had to bring in consultants, which. Is really expensive. And so that's kind of that, like the. An example I've give of a, of a benefit, and I know that there's people that feel strongly about these topics, but, um. If we do like our TSP, then we just said, uh, this was reviewed on, I think it was two different occasions by our. Diversity Equity Inclusion Committee and they've signed off on it and that's all we had to put there. It was just done. Um, versus, we had these 12 facilitated community meetings. And we reached out in these different languages and we did this and that. That's what I've had to do in other communities.
I have two questions. How many grants did the DEI review this last 12 months?
I haven't, uh, the only one I think that I've applied for that they reviewed was the, um, was when I took them, the thriving communities. I haven't.
So if there was an ad hoc committee of people that were willing to serve on that to get together once a year if they need to. Or twice or three times a year, whatever it is, be fine. And then that would still meet all the conditions for. We would have a DEI committee that could meet ad hoc for a specific reason of looking at a grant writing.
Like a grant or like Peter's talking about.
It seems like that's the biggest concern that everyone has with that committee going away.
Yeah.
Is funds drying up. So if we can just check the box that, well. That's what gets, keeps getting brought up is the money. Like we need the money, we need the money, we need the money. I don't think we need the money that bad. But if it's that important and we can have other committee members from, from the sitting committees, maybe. A chair automatically from each of those committees gets, is automatically put on like a liaison to that ad hoc committee or whatever it may be. And then they can meet once a year or twice a year to, to look at a specific grant for that stuff.
Uh, I like what you're saying there. I, my concern is if we're going to go the language of grants specifically, right? Then what, we have to have a contingency say that if the federal government doesn't get overturned, it doesn't get taken to Supreme Court or something and that. This sticks and then the state of Oregon's got to follow suit regarding DIC and the dismantling of whatever, right? Okay. But if they take away the state's funding, let's just say they don't have money anymore, then we don't have the asset. So what outside of that? Because before DIC was accessibility considerations anyway, ADA and stuff like that, right? Now, am I saying that the community isn't inclusive? No. And I, and I know we're not having an argument about keeping or disbanding. That's not my point. What I'm saying is I'd respect for the people involved with this too. I think there's a tenure here where we're literally having a conversation about this committee. And the frequency at which we could keep it or utilize it so that we could write grants. Grants that quite frankly, we've gotten some that we're using, but you just said there's a few. I mean, I'd like to see a total number, I guess is what I'm asking. I'd like to see a total number of grants we got because of DIC. What we're projected to get, what is still possibly being funded by DIC currently? Okay. I want, I want to see a list to make sure that this makes sense. Now with that being said, I don't want to take away, I want to be clear, the work that they've done. To make sure that people feel included and that their opinions are heard or that they don't feel judged for their sexuality preferences and things like that. I totally understand that. And I don't think anybody on this, anybody up here wants to take away from that. But I do think that there's a point where we got to just continue with business and we can utilize other resources in other places. That being said, since we're not discussing that, I'm not suggesting anything with any action, but I would. Would like to come to like shuffle in the deck on, going back to the liaison thing, like where we're at, who's doing what and. What's a sustainable, I mean. We got holes and then you mentioned, excuse me if I was wrong, but there was a new committee that you mentioned briefly in the beginning.
Economic.
No, no, I know that one, but there was a. You said something tech or something.
Oh, are you talking about the H Mac, the, the Hazard Mitigation Action Committee? That's, that's, that's.
No, that wasn't it. It was something in, in, along the lines of, it was supporting another thing that already currently doing, but. Anyway, that, that's my, I'm sorry to take the podium there, but that's my attention on that. I'm good with whatever comes.
Yeah, this is, um. This is an odd time. Um, in a way, it almost feels odd to talk about something like this because anti-deme- discrimination's been. You know, the law of the land for generations. And yet here we are. Um, and so, but the other part of that though is that, cause earlier today we were talking about federal money. And my understanding is that per federal, you can't have DEI anything. And so, but. Our day at the Capitol the other day, I distinctly remember one of the, I think the sen- Senator. The second word out of his mouth was equity. So, so that's the ground that we're on, you know, it's. It's these two massive tides and they're hitting each other and it's turbulent. And so the idea of ad hoc, it makes sense to me where you're using it as needed instead of standing. And it could be something written in where you've got one member per sta- per committee. That is the DEI representative on the ad hoc, that if they are needed. You know, there is a person. So there's something identified for, for this side. And, but they're not standing for the other side, you know, however that works. So we might consider something like that.
And I, I will say, I did send out a quantitative list last year, almost exactly a year ago. That outlined how much money the grants we've got in and I found that email so I can, I can.
I have it printed out.
Oh.
And I, there was a petition that was made last March. That included the information that, that you had given us. And I can hand that out to everybody. So there is a list that. That the city has benefited. Um, but. I'm just contending that, that, that this committee is only benefiting us. So. I, I just don't see what the, what the harm is in actually keeping it. I don't think it needs to be members from other committees because they have, they have their, their. Their, um, interests that they're interested in. People are on these committees specifically for what it represents. So if we decide to do ad hoc, that's fine, but I think that we need to attract people that are interested in the reasons. The committee exists.
That was going to be my suggestion is that if we do ad hoc, rather than assigning people to it, maybe do a public notice to say, hey, we're. Starting our transportation, our parks plan update, we're starting our parks plan update. For instance, because we're going to do that this year and we need some people who'd be interesting to be interested in being on a DEI. Well, we could call some inclusion and access committee to support this, um, this. Planning process. And then people who are interested or for instance, I've just reached out, we want to get a grant to pave the trails in. Um, the new part of Wade Creek because that was, they're using that tiny gravel and compacting it was supposed to be. It was supposed to suffice for ADA accessibility. In reality, it doesn't really work. I have a friend who has a. A three-year-old in a wheelchair. She wants to do it herself and she can't do it herself on the gravel. And I have a friend who has a, um, mom who's a senior and she has a, still has a wheelchair with tiny little wheels and it just doesn't roll. So we're. You know, so we've asked for, um, letters to come from them to support this. But things, and things like that, we might want to pull together, you know, and access an inclusion committee. To review and make sure that we're not missing things. And to Peter's point, um, you know, all the. to review and make sure that we're not missing things. And to Peter's point, um, you know, all the things that we'd have to do if we didn't have the committee. Some of those things we probably should be doing anyway, and those should be recommendations of the committee. Cause my concern is making sure that the community has access and is included or has opportunity to be included. Because you're right there. This has been law for decades. But has it been practiced for decades, not in all areas? Um, and so I think that if you want to not have, if the committee has like passed its point of, of where we need a committee for, how are we going to meet the inclusion and access? You know, how are we going to get that perspective? Are we going to do more trainings? Um, are we going to have some event or fairs that brings, I don't know how, I don't know even what to do. But how are we going to meet that priority if the committee is past its, um, point where we want to have the committee?
Is there, uh, I'm just, I'm sincerely asking, this is just to be clear here. Cause out of an abundance of respect, I'm interested in learning too, right? Is there something? Because like I'm reading this, your, your handout here from last year and one of the first things I see here, every federal, every federal DOT, DOT grant must address D E I. Okay. So, but that's changed, obviously, correct? Now the state opportunities there still exist. I'm not just pointing that. But again, my question remains the same. The things that we were counting on, that we put in for that are grant from federal, one, is it still going to be tenetured to us? If it's regarding D E I, we don't know yet is what it sounded like from day at the Capitol, if I was correct. So it sounded like they're not really sure. And then two, if that does, if that is the case where no longer federally app- applicable for that, like I'm with you that the, having a committee that maybe looks at things so that the community feels this, but quite frankly, what I think the bad association here that has happened is that we're taking accessibility and things like that, and, and things are taking people from being able to get in or cross the sidewalk, cross the streets and all these different things, things that we had systems for previously, right? And because they're so important, and I'm not saying one's less than other, but because of the weight that they hold, we're now lumping them in with other things that hold weight. Okay. With the D I, inclusion and equity and things like that. And we're wrapping up together. What I'm asking is that we separate that. I'm not saying that there's not a lane here where we don't care, but there needs to be a lane where when it comes to rule law and how we definitively act, okay? We're not going after money because it goes, it, it's, I don't know. I believe to somebody.
And I just, to say that, yeah. Say that committee is only to gather money is kind of an insult to the work they're doing.
In conversation that if we lose that, then we lose grants. And that's the feeling I'm getting. And I don't.
Not, not that we lose grants, that it makes it more difficult for us to engage the process needed for.
The list here of the actual monies is state stuff. But it also federal, that may change, but there are still opportunities with businesses, foundations and the state to get money. Yes, money isn't the only thing. It, we, there are a lot of people that feel included because we have this committee, they see it and they're like, oh, this city cares about me. They want to make sure I'm included. I have not heard a tangible reason to dismantle it, other than the negative connotations at the federal level.
And the negative behavior of the members of that committee that continuously do not get corrected over and over and over again. I, I haven't, other than this list, I haven't seen anything productive come from that committee in the two and a half years I've been here.
You cannot judge a committee based on its members. That's not.
What, what have they brought to the table in the last two and a half years?
Do you want to have a workshop?
We're getting out of, out of line here. Let's just look at this in a way that solves the problem. I have no problem with an ad hoc committee throwing it together as needed versus having a committee focused on that in general on a regular basis. We've had this discussion. We fought this thing. We were looking at the federal level. We're looking at the state level. It's not, you know, diversity, equity, inclusion is so dividing. It, it's just, it sickens me sometimes to hear how dividing it is. Because I've seen everything that it encompasses over my lifetime. And it has changed so much because of this one series of letters, D E I. It's made us separate. It's made us argue. It's made us everything for nothing. Because what we're really looking at here is the need to, to, to be a part of it when it matters. So the ad hoc committee and Peter discussing with us that we have to have it for a certain things coming up is, it makes sense. It's not something we have to have standing all the time. So we can raise our hands and said, hey, we're D E I. You know, that is the separation here. And that's what we need to get away from. We are not that community. We are not that part of the United States. We are a part that cares about Estacada, Estacada first. And that's what we're really talking about here. So let's get away from the arguing. Let's get away from the petty stuff. Let's look at the ad hoc idea. I love that. Jerry, go ahead.
Okay. So, um, one of our goals up there is community engagement. So I'm going to go back to my initial statement. Why don't we reroute this committee to be community engagement, accessibility and, um, inclusivity committee, you know, reroute this committee to be, to fit one of our goals, which is community engagement and accessibility. That's been all over pretty much everything that we've talked about tonight. So reroute this committee to community engagement, accessibility and inclusivity. We have to, we have to have the inclusivity part because this community is very, very diverse and we need to include everybody. So, um, reroute the committee to, to that community engagement, accessibility and inclusivity. Um, then we still have this committee on board for grants, you know, what, when, when they're needed. Um, but we, you know, again, one of our goals is community engagement and accessibility.
Can we write the code for what they're actually tasked with to relate to that?
Yeah. Just reroute them to that direction.
I don't, I, I appreciate the sentiment. I do. I'm not, no disrespect. I don't relate to that, though. I disagree with that. Quite frankly, I, I think that what the mayor said about it, the device, I mean, look at this, we can, we all may have different ways of doing stuff, but we literally just got, got into a heated argument because at the end of the day, Heidi, whether I agree with you or not on your decisions, I respect you as an adult and a human on this earth. Regardless, and I look at you as a leader in Estacada because you sit at this podium, which a lot of other people don't have the teneture or the guts to even try to do. So period, the end on that. Like that's how this is, but look, now it comes to a topic and now we're ready to throw each other out the door over it. Because what? And then Jerry, to your point, what you just said about, we need to make sure we include the word inclusive because this community is divisive. Isn't that assumptive to assume this community isn't inclusive on its own? Cause you're assuming that the community members aren't coming and taking people as they are. But that's not the stale I street. That's not the tale I see when I walk around the community. That's not the tale I see when I hear people come and they talk about how much they love this area because of it, how proud they are to be here. I see them in the gym every morning, new people that come in. And they're happy that we're making changes and there's some things that they don't get, but they're talking. And am I saying we're doing everything right? Nobody is.
Do you think we need a workshop to discuss this?
I think that we were already, I think, I thought we were at the point where we're ready to talk and make a vote, not here, but at, at council.
So at council, bring it back to a council meeting where a community can come and talk about it.
And it's in the code, so there's a process.
Yes, we'd have to follow through the, the code process. Um, okay. So let's see, um, where does that go?
Yeah. But before, before, when we were talking about the number of seats and the vacancies, um, can we talk about the range of seats in the, in the committees? Because as you see, they range from five to nine, and I think it would be easy for, for us and probably the community, if all of the, all of the committees had a range rather than a specific set number. Cause then if we don't have an opening, we're not sitting there constantly looking for. So if, if, if the committee ranges was, everybody was five to nine committee members, then that would mean if we lost one and we were at six, we weren't constantly sitting there trying to advertise and bring somebody in.
Uh, and just from what you're seeing, this is, this is up your alley. You guys are the ones dealing with all this. Uh, are these the appropriate sizes? Do you, do you like seeing the range five to seven? Is three to five more appropriate? I mean, what?
Yeah, three would be too small. I think five to nine is, is a good range. Five to seven is good. You, you get above nine and it makes it difficult to, to get consensus. And if you get below five, you can't get a, get a quorum. Yeah. And I think that would be a fairly easy code change. Everybody's in agreement for those kind of bright sizing the.
Okay. Okay. And then you want to, do you want to take a look at the liaisons real quick and see, um, if you want to keep the one you're still signed up for, and then we have some gaps because Counselor Strobel, Counselor Hughes are no longer.
Well, we're going to have a new counselor come on. So we, shall we wait to do that?
Till they're appointed.
They can ask the new counselor if he wants to be a part of it, rather than just decide.
Or she.
I see, right. So we'll put that on, uh, the upcoming agenda. Well, we'll just add that to an agenda then to sign up for liaisons. That, okay, okay. Doesn't have to be a goal. We'll just get it on there and get you moving forward. Okay. Um, I think that's everything.
That's great. Well, that's a lot of great, healthy conversation.
Yeah.
Um, I will say, and I heard you guys talking about, um, grants, but what we have seen in other communities, especially around development code and comp plans, again, you have federal level, state level. So you've got two different actors involved there, right? And you got to think about Oregon. So what we're seeing other cities, just to think to what your counselor, what Peter talked about is, um, when you have to go forward and get comp plan amendments, a development plan amendments, other participation, just besides grants. Um, there is a cost balance to that. So I think as you guys are thinking about that, uh, I think Camby went out, did a community engagement study, you know, cost several thousands of dollars. So just, just something to think about as you're thinking about those committees from that standpoint there. So.
But that'll be unnecessary with an ad hoc committee. All that.
So, so what we have to present for any comp plan amendment or anything that gets reviewed by D L C D staff is goal one of the Oregon Land use goals, which is public participation. So what we need to demonstrate in that is outreach. And that's really what it boils down to for me. It's hard to decouple, like what people are seeing nationally, whether it's the University of Michigan or Columbia or wherever around this term, D E I versus what, how we've been able to utilize it in Estacada, which has been to make sure, it, it's basically, it's basically a cheat code to demonstrate that we've met our goal on public participation rules. And, and I'm, I am not in any way intending to disrespect the work of that committee by, by purely distilling it to something that makes our lives convenient. Um, because it's much more than that. And I, I, I think that they provide perspectives. You know, I, there were some issues. Counselor Hughes and I talked about those. There were some issues that I had concerns with about some things that a member of the committee said last year. And I just, I think that I wish there was some way that we could decouple the national, I'm going to call it baggage associated with what. And I saw them get, offer my own personal opinion, but what I'd say is like a grievance based system that I have watched makes people more likely to retreat back to their group because they're so scared that they're going to say the wrong thing and be called out on it, that they won't even have the conversation. How, how did decouple that from, um, something that adds efficiency to the city? And as far as interfacing with state agencies, the thing that has changed and a very valid point is federally, um, this is all being, this is all going away. And, and I don't yet know how we're going to navigate that. Crash, this, this collision between what Oregon wants to do and what the feds want to do. But I will say this is, is someone who arrived in Mississippi when, for college, when Louisiana was forced to change their drinking age from eighteen to twenty-one, or they would lose all of their transportation dollars. Like the ability for the federal government to make people do what they want, it's, you know, it's possible. So.
Thirty-one percent of the state budget comes from federal dollars.
Yeah. So I think.
Pretty good chance they're going to do what they're told.
Yeah. So I think that, I think that, um, you know, I, I see the benefit of having it. Um, I understand the baggage that many people think of when they hear it. I wish there was some way to describe it in a way that did what I think the Estacada intent was, which, which I remember, because I remember when this came about and, and it was, you know, Estacada has Estacada values that they've long held. And part of it is we have new people moving in versus the children of, you know, people that grew up here. How do we fold them into this community while like, learning what their perspectives are? Like how, how can this? How can these opinions or the, the, um, life lessons they've learned, how can that enhance our community? And, and literally that was what people were trying to do is like, how do we fold people into the mix? And so it's, it's kind of disheartening that it now people, some people associate it with, um, the opposite, which is exclusion instead of, um, making people feel like they're at home here, even if they didn't grow up here. So I, I don't have the answer for you. Um, I mean, again, strictly legally from D L C D staff, um, we'll have to demonstrate that goal, one compliance somehow. And I don't know if renaming it something that, like calling it a community committee or whatever, I don't know if that would help. Um, but yeah, no, I, I, I hear what everyone's saying on this.
You don't write down the frequency of the meetings of how many times I meet on that occasion. You just write that it's been reviewed by the D E I committee. You're not going to say.
Twice.
It's, yeah, it's been reviewed twice by that committee. You don't say that committee's meeting once a month or once a week or.
Yeah, I think for the T S P, we had them review it early on. I think they were one of the first meetings.
I think we had them review it three times. We had them review the outreach and engagement portion to make sure that we were, uh, our plan for outreach and discussions was going to reach all the communities we wanted included. And then we had them review the initial information that we got back. And then after they did the public outreach, we had them review it a third time. So I want to say it was three different times that we had them review it, including all of the different projects that, that came out of it too.
And, and I will probably bring up because your next goal is development code. You're going to have to have participation on that. Uh, as we go to the number five here, because D L C D will want to see that too. We've just run into that in other cities when they're going through, whether it's development code or comp plan updates, um, just FYI on that. So.
So lots of things. Um, first off regarding the T S P, uh, specifically, um, I remember D E I was the committee that was, uh, not mandatory, but whatever the phrase was where they were, were, uh, involved. And I thought it odd that the transportation, uh, uh, you know, T S P was not.
Formed yet when we started the project. Okay.
Um, but, but, but we were never added because that was literally what we were doing, um, is that sort of thing. And without, you know, going too far down this, this, um, road, uh, cause I don't know that this is the form for that, maybe the next meeting is. But you know, we're not talking about perceptions when we're talking about the impact of, of what this has done. There are, um, uh, there are measurable results of the impact of, of what these sorts of committees have done across the country, not just Michigan, not just Columbia, not just Portland, um, you know, i- if you read, I'll give one example and then I'll stop. And by the way, if anyone wants to read, uh, about civil rights and that sort of thing, Taylor Branch has got a three series volume that is outstanding. Um, centered around, uh, Dr. Martin Luther King and everything went, went on through there, how horrific it was. And so I said, it's a, i- it's a very important and valid topic. Um, and certainly there's more to be done, but some things you just can't change. Those private citizens or whatever, you can't do anything. But, but, you know, I've read it, I've read multiple stories. One example would be a school district that has a slave auction as a, a classroom exercise. Um, how on earth does that happen? And it doesn't happen because there's some white supremacist or some other bozo, uh, writing the curriculum. Uh, in this particular instance, it came from a D E I, um, consultant that wrote the curriculum. And so that's how that happens. And of course it was a giant outrage and there's example after example after example. And it, it's whatever the intent is, it ends up creating this, this animus that we're, that we're feeling right now. whatever the intent is, it ends up creating this this animus that we're that we're feeling right now. And so I agree that that something's gotta change. And the purpose of the the deep, my understanding of the purpose of the DEI committee with the TSP was because it was necessary for that particular thing. Well, I think an ad hoc committee does the same thing. Um, and with with identified members from that committee um instead of uh other individuals.
So we'll bring back some ideas. Put it on a, on an agenda. Um, I don't know if you wanna have a workshop with the DEI or if you wanna have a meeting, just have it at a meeting and let the DEI um, committee come and listen in and then um share, you know, they can share public comment. Um, I don't sure how you wanna.
Well, I think it's only fair that they may comment. I mean, I wouldn't have it any other way.
Like the workshop.
Yeah, I I I think, you know, it's gonna go of one way or the other. It doesn't really matter. That's not the point here. The point is that everybody has a voice. So I wanna hear anybody who wants to speak on that here that night. So yes, I would like it open to them and to whoever wants to speak on it. Uh, it may make the meeting longer, but that's not the point. The point is that we're community minded and everybody gets a voice. Uh, that said, I I would like to ask a question too going forward. I first, I wanna thank Elena. She is a money grabber grant wise. I don't know how she does it, but at the same time, there are a lot of grants out there and I never know what we're applying for or not applying for, or what grants you wanna go out for, or what what you've got on your list. But is there any way we can get an idea ahead of time of grants that you're filing for? Or stuff that we can read into to find out what the purpose is, how we get it and what it's gonna take and and where the tie-ins are in the future?
I can, I could probably put you together. I don't apply every month, but I could probably put you together a monthly list of these are the grants I'm considering and the projects and how they. When I apply for a grant, it aligns with the project we have already identified. So it's something that's in one of our our plans, whether it's the water master plan, the wastewater plan, the parks master plan. I'm I'm not applying for grants for things that this the city has not already identified as something that that needs to happen. So I wanna be clear that I'm just not like, hey, let's bring in some money.
Yeah, yeah.
But I, yeah. I can totally.
What we're filing.
Send you like a monthly.
As counselor or as a mayor, I just feel it equips me with the information I need to make that decision going forward. Jonathan, do you have something else?
Yeah, I mean, uh, listen, I'd I'd see community engagement. I think like one thing that was clear about this council. Uh, you know, it's, you weren't here yet, but from the little bit we've got to talk at day at the Capitol and stuff, I assume you're, what's important to you is the same of your values. So we talked about trust and and we spoke about this and community engagement, community involvement and transparency and building a a robust team that so that when we go to make these hard decisions, the community understands like that we've, we're doing this with their best interest because we've demonstrated on the front end by having the tough conversations and just to having it out front. So I have a couple of questions with that. And and this is in the interest of, you know, one, um, you guys have a lot on your plate and quite frankly, you get all of the feedback and blowback, but we get it first. But then it comes to you subsequently, specifically you, Melanie as the city manager, cuz you're who our tenures technically with, correct? So that being said, I mean, one, I would like to know what what is, what do we think the average time is on a grant from from start to maintenance, right? Is it thirty hours? Is it twenty hours? And then how much of that is the initial research and making sure that this is a fit? Is that four hours of it is that, right? And then the next twenty-five hours is in maintenance and garnering this or that, but can we see grants at, what I would say is, I would like to the council to start being involved in the position of seeing, bring it to us at, these are the grants that we're looking at and that we qualify for at the, say, for figures here. Four hour mark and say that there's twenty-six hours after research. But before you go and invest twenty-six hours of staff time on it, let's make sure that the council is like, hey, that's great. Because Elena does do incredible work and you have, and there's not a person in this room that could challenge you on that cuz your results speak. And I respect the heck out of that about you. But that being said, I think that we would like to know more of what we're doing. Cuz we're the ones being asked. I want the community to know what's going on and I just wanna be read into more. What's that? Because maybe, maybe like, maybe recreational grants, right? And then also can we support you by looking at what would it cost to contract somebody to assist in doing that so that there's more grants out, right? I mean, for other items, cuz you're only limited so much and you're and correct me if I'm wrong, are you the only one on or primarily the one on staff that's going after grants?
Yeah, pretty much.
Okay, so in the interest of, we know we need grant money, so why don't we spend a little to get a lot? Kinda, and like, why don't we, but in the interest of community buy-in and trust and just going about this in a new order here and the council being read in on what's going on. Can we do that in a way that's new and brought out and and more involved, I guess is the word I'm looking for.
Let me chew on that a little bit on how we would do that cuz a lot of the grants are like, I like sure thing kinda grants, like the, we used to get the smalls or special city allotment from ODOT. We get, so we get ODOT grants, we get county grants. Um, we get some state grants for planning, um, try to get them for like our park development. Um, so it's, they're kinda, and then every once in a while, like this one for the, to pave the parks, that's a T-Mobile grant or something. So it's more of a long shot, but not for her cuz she's done it before.
I thought that one before.
Yeah, and it's not real onerous to do the whole thing, so.
Yeah, I have a spreadsheet of grants that we could apply for. I don't keep track of my time in that because that that'd be onerous for me. To be able to like keep track of every like half an hour cuz I am generally fitting the grant writing in between other things. And so for me to say, hey, yes, it took me, you know, twenty-five hours on this, that would be me tracking like thirty minutes here, thirty minutes there, thirty minutes there. And that would, that would be a lot more work on me. It'd add more work on my plate.
Then we should get a, maybe look at a consultant, like I said, somebody that that is a measurable result where we can see it. That's all, and that's an shame to you.
And and I would say.
Look at it, let's look at it first, kinda give us an idea what that would encompass before we, you know, go off on a tangent on this. Cuz I know it'd be hard to, it'd be hard to track the hours for you and almost it would cost you more trying to do that than it'd be worth.
How much, what's the, how much do we have to give to get?
Yeah, yeah, give us an idea.
And I do, like I do a cost benefit analysis on any grant before I consider. I was like, is this really worth the time? Because this is only, you know, twenty-five thousand dollars and I can apply for the five hundred thousand dollar grant in probably the same time. And so I do a cost benefit analysis. And if you're looking, it's hard to find grant writers right now. And I know, I know Mike has asked me a few times. But there are other things that are on my plate that would be easier to replace than grant writing.
So am I to understand it would maybe interest you to modify your role?
Not, not necessarily. Like if we, if we hired somebody to take off, yeah, and we can talk about staffing later.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, but I hear what you're saying. Yeah, you wanna, somebody else, okay. Or I don't wanna interrupt, but I just wanna say that I'd like to put on here, um, hire a communications person full-time.
Yeah, cuz that would, just doing that would take a lot off my plate.
Yeah.
I just have a quick question if that's all right. Um, the grant writing course is available to us.
Yes.
Do you think that would help us understand what you have to go through?
Yeah, oh yeah, certainly.
I would write grants too.
Yeah.
Actually just wrote a pretty good one, but I, so I understand the tenure, the question I'm asking, I'm asking in support of her, not not in criticism.
And I am too.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I do wanna, I just wanna make sure.
I I would, I would recommend, I think it would be fantastic if somebody from every committee took the grant writing course so they can write their own grants within the committees cuz that would be fantastic.
And sometimes they're applying for like twenty-five hundred dollar grants.
Yes.
She is not going to do that. But a volunteer could write it, you know, to sup- supplement the funding that they do put their program on with. And it's not that it's that hard to do. It's just, it takes a little bit of time and the the return on investment is she's doing other things that I'm like, don't do that. Um, so yes, but we can give you more information on, so you understand how that, how that rolls. You'll have, we'll have to figure that out. But I added on here, training on emergency response and recovery, like on the system, I guess, is what I'm talking about. And I'll, I'll erase it if you don't like that. And also do a tabletop exercise. Um, this year is that, I was hearing kind of those kinda things.
Yeah, you said there was a certification. There was that, there was a.
Oh, ICS seven hundred. Is like.
Actually have that as one of the goals to talk.
Yeah, oh, is that coming up? So we're, we're gonna probably have to do your urban renewal training at a workshop.
Through five, six and seven. We can do urban rentals, uh, we'll do five and six and then. Yeah, the last one's urban rental.
Okay, this is.
Uh, the development code. So we, Alan spoke to it briefly, uh, if you wanna spark to it more, but uh, going through the development code, the other thing we've talked about is um, just looking at some of that highway furnish coming into Estacada, like really some of that zoning and and that complan's kinda changed over years ago, but maybe creating some more flexibility in that for development to happen in that area. So um, Alan, if you wanna speak to what you've started on the development code, kinda play that, that'd be great.
Well, just to speak more to that too about the zones that you're, so specifically, I think you were talking about the um, the outdoor commercial.
Yeah, the outdoor commercial.
Maybe those zones are not really doing what the eh, the original intent of council was, and then maybe we need to look at consolidate, consolidating or or resuming those. So I think that's the.
That's it, that's it. How's the council feel about that?
Which zone are you talking about?
Riverfront commercial and outdoor commercial. So we could like pull up the maps. Yeah, we could get those out.
They're kind of antiquated.
Well, I think they were new. Yeah, I think they were new, it's like twenty-eighteen or something. Yeah, so it's before my time that they were created, but um.
So it's over by um Dick's Logging, that little section and then out past the industrial campus, it's the green, I think they're green.
Yeah, both of those are just along the highway. And specifically with the outdoor commercial, there's really just not much allowed in the zone. And I'm looking at this code and wondering what the intent was myself. Um, it's so limited. Um, riverfront commercial was something that Elena brought to my attention. I'm not sure if there's.
When we did riverfront commercial, based on the um economic opportunities analysis, is the plan that we were gonna move the wastewater treatment plant. And that would free up that area down there where the wastewater treatment plant is, Timber Park, to use it for more outdoor recreation kind of attractant. But now that we're keeping the wastewater plant there, is that still of, because we're not seeing that the businesses that are down there like Dick's Logging are moving out. So is that really still the correct zoning that we want down there for that riverfront?
And the other industrial company and then the vacant lot.
Yeah.
Very restricted in what they can develop on that lot.
So just, just looking at it and seeing, does this still, does, do the, the goals that we had wanted for this area, do they still, are they still valid? Because the plans had changed from when we originally set that up.
Yeah, and so some of the options would be to relook at what is allowed in the zones, look at the purposes of the zones, or maybe even consolidate and eliminate some of the zones and just rezone to something that exists that better fits those areas. Or do nothing.
Would you wanna start that through um economic development?
You could direct, you know, like staff to have economic development, look at that highway, get some input, you know, what that could be, and we could bring that back to council. That could be something come from that. Um, just for for thought, that could be a way we could work with staff could come in and make some suggestions on that area there. So it's definitely, you know, you're looking at the development code. Now's kind of the time to be maybe thinking about that, direct the staff to bring some suggestions and really think about how you could maybe create, you know, you kinda have this narrow zoning for very limited use, right?
Yeah.
We wanna create more flexibility, uh, opportunities for more transactions to take place in those areas would be helpful as a way to think about it from a commercially standpoint there.
Oh, I'm game, game to look at it. I want it to come to us. I wanna be able to see it.
Yeah.
I don't wanna send it to economic development and, you know, I see it way later. I like to see it.
Yeah, come in, okay, okay.
We can make it fit into a existing zone rather than rewriting a bunch of code for that other zone if we well into highway commercial and it checks all the boxes that we may need to make a couple of conditionally use add-ons to that, then.
Yeah, okay.
So I wrote evaluate code for high, I wrote, first I wrote revise and I got rid of that. Let's evaluate it first. Evaluate the code for highway zoning. Bring the options and is that?
Yeah, that sounds good.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, the next one.
Okay.
So I have a question though, would uh, if if, so if the riverfront commercial was rezoned to highway commercial and we decided that we wanted to still put a park where the current wastewater treatment plant is, could we still do that?
Sure, you would just have to have a carve-out or just be thoughtful about that when you um adopted.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that that was still an option.
All right, the next one, uh, strengthen the city's emergency preparedness through training and collaboration. I think we talked about this earlier today. It was an ongoing goal that we've had from last year. And just really, I think what I heard from you, you know, is just really, I think doing the ICS uh seven hundred class would be great. Uh, we could find someone for one hundred, two hundred classes. And then I think just really doing a tabletop exercise would be whether the summer around fire, you got water, all those resources. That just in itself, I think, you know, especially after something just happened in California, would just be something as a good goal for all the council to just go through, right? And just where your roles are, how you sit, you know, just to do that. Um, I think being proactive, Aaron, what you talked about, I think is a great opportunity to do that, so.
I think you're right.
Okay, so I wrote training, which would be the ICS seven hundred. You can Google that and see what that involves.
I'm interested in learning about the authority structures, like when it gets elevated and the state takes over. What that responsibility chart looks like for us, where we fit into that at the county level, at the state level, or when we're still in control of fighting the fires, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
Hey, and the last, they're saying was uh, to complete a parking study. Again, this goes into the uh economic vitality and the growth of the downtown area here. And that's really looking, it kinda ties in with your wayfinding to signage there. So really, you know, thinking about maybe having a downtown parking committee could, you know, commission could do that. Look at that parking study, Main Street program has a great, you know, program to do, looking at your parking, but then also getting signage up so people know like how far it is to walk, you know, this is a very walkable downtown, right? So like, just educating uh where you can park, how far it is, it's, you know, two tenths of a mile to walk from this way, right? So I think that's something uh to help spur your economic, you know, downtown is something to consider here from that standpoint there.
I'd agree, and I think keeping it on a more decorative uh aspect of wayfinding.
Yeah.
Only because our downtown is actually uh setting up to be uh have its own identity. And I think keeping with that whole, you know, experience and keeping it nice so that people can see these wayfinders. I mean, look at Oregon City, they did that whole thing, but they kept it, you know, they're all brown and they're all up on a pole and they all look exactly the same. It was kinda nice to see that. Um, and finding your way around the city. So if we could stay in that category of wayfinding.
So should I write? Oh, explore. There you go. That's the word. I was like, explore wayfinding and signage, uh, design, maybe. That would be in the economic growth and business.
Where did the data for the parking needs when we were, they kept coming up uh during the Main Street project when we were gonna address parking needs? How old was that study? And what, what were they using the reference for the parking needs?
We did a parking study. I don't even know when it was. Well, we did a parking study a long time ago. Um, and I don't remember.
Not in the last ten years.
It might be ten, it might be within ten years, but things have changed significantly down here in the last five years. Um, I think it's time, plus, I mean, I don't know how, then we're gonna identify problems to solve, which is great cuz that's what you do. Um, but we do have, we have a very vibrant downtown and everybody drives into the downtown. And um, there's, there is a need.
There's a need for it.
Yeah, so um, wait a minute, explore wayfinding, signage, plan.
Maybe budget for some signage to get started.
Yeah, budget.
Do you remember how long that was, that study took?
No, I don't think it's quick. I don't think it takes long. I can't remember if we did it, if we, we were thinking maybe the DEC could even do it. Count.
Yeah, it's a parking.
The, the um, state Main Street organi- not the state, the uh, federal Main Street organization has an outline for the main streets to do a parking study. It kind of outlines steps you can do and has like forms you can follow that that the DEC could probably do it.
Okay.
Target point for them to do within a certain amount of time.
Twenty twenty-five, I think like maybe by Jerry, July or something, you'd think that could.
Yeah, it's, it is kinda labor intensive. It might be great if the, if the DEC and the TPSC could partner together on it and get, that way you, you get twice as many committee members out there.
Yeah, however.
So?
Yeah.
But that's something measurable, right? We give them something that we, they could say.
If they come back with something really that you're, you're like, we need a deeper dive on this, then we could hire an actual consultant to do it.
Yeah.
Um, but yeah.
Well, that's helpful for, you know, you got the retail study done, you know, for factory businesses, you have your parking plan, you know, study parking plan. Wayfinding just helps businesses.
What about that, what about that hotel assessment? Did you wanna like?
I think the hotel assessment is something you should really think about.
We tried to do it like thirteen years ago, fourteen years ago and um, it was just not the time to do it. We tried to do it like thirteen years ago, fourteen years ago, and, um, it was just not the time to do it.
Identifying, you know, what it would take to Peter's plan, looking at, you know, what, what, you're going to have some gap. That's normal. What we're seeing in some of these communities, you know, but understanding that and really showing like what your capture would be in this area, right? Any hotel provider that, you know, if you have that done and it's available and they come in here to have a conversation with you and you're able to put that on the, out there for them, you're, you're one step in front of another city, right? So that's something to really think about doing and completing there.
Would this allow us to attract them too, like to?
Yeah, it does. The track, it, it, and it, you know, and, and actually just thinking about, you know, uh, you know, what I've seen other communities do is just, you know, making sure there's, you, you kind of have some developers that are on attack that are, that work in that field in that area, right? So that really, they look with operators. So it's a win-win too, to think about that from that standpoint there too, so.
For, uh, investigate process and cost for a hotel needs study. We'll bring that back to decide if you want to, if it's worth it, we'll do it.
Okay, the, the last one was the, uh, urban renewal assessment, and we can come in and do a whole work study on it. But one of the things that we were talking about is just really do an assessment of the urban renewal district that you had, the success of it, because it has been very successful. And then the discussion around really thinking about studying a new urban renewal area, uh, thinking about where that boundary would be, setting up a tag and identifying what the potential maximum indebtedness could be for that and thinking about where those boundaries would be. So like, you know, you got, uh, the waterfront area here, right? So that's a great opportunity, you know, to be able to dot drive dollars in here. You have the mill site, you have just, how do you connect these areas and thinking about where that boundary would be, I think would be an excellent opportunity for you to really explore that as you go forward this year, so.
Well, I think you just discussed it. I mean, the mill property is a given. Okay, that's, that's beyond a shadow of a doubt, urban renewal dollars have to be involved there. Uh, the lake shore being the next biggest, because that's going to take some serious amount of funds right at the beginning of it in order to get where we need to get with that. And I think what we're looking at between everything else, you know, talking about that property out there and everything else, making sure that we have the funds to do that in place only makes sense. So I think you've cap, you've capitalized on the key area right there with what you've got. Um, I think that's where we should focus our attention. I don't know. How do you feel about that? Any of it, I can't comment on it. Okay.
Uh, I think I like the, I like the idea. I'm, I'm curious to, to your thoughts on this as well, just thinking out loud, uh, one, I, I do like the make, the mill. I like the mill from the aspect of it's new, it's vibrant, it's going to be, uh, you know, we're going to be able to capitalize on reutilizing an old industry in the, from the community. And then I think with the way that that zone, we're going to have some really interesting opportunities at different businesses that want to come in and position themselves in kind of uptown Estacada as that develops now. And then I, the lake shore thing, I, I could see the value in that too. I, I would want to put maybe a parameter there on the lake shore. I, I like your outline right there. I like, I just think that w- we need to be able to preserve with that something that could entice people to use stuff to open up more access or riverfront opportunities as well, right? So whether they're using the grant opportunities for, I don't know, like outside seating for, say, somebody did a wine bar down there by the river or something or things like that, right? I just want to encompass that it opens up more access.
Isn't that outline our current urban renewal?
Yes.
Yeah.
Is the mill new though?
Normally what would happen.
The mill's not in that outline though.
That's a, that's.
Well, that it stops before it gets there, but.
Yeah.
What area of Lake Shore are you referencing? Is it the one that's currently in the?
So what would, what would happen, uh, councilman players, basically, I think there's two steps that the council needs to think about this year is, is one doing the assessment so you can see the benefits. So you understand the value of urban renewal in the committee and the community understands that, right? And then the second I would suggest is, you know, setting up a, a tack advisory committee of representatives uh, on that committee that help kind of shape your boundary. Uh, that's, you need people that are business representatives, property owners, you know, uh, some governmental folks, you know, fire department stuff need to be on this as you go through this process. And have that conversation, have them come up with a couple of boundary suggestions to the council, right? So, and then you can vet that out from that standpoint, but just really looking at where these blighted properties and areas of investment are, uh, there's a lot of infrastructure has to go in up on that mill road. There has to be infrastructure down in the lake shore, but first you just need to find your boundary. Uh, and then from the green on that boundary, then we can run, you know, assessments on what your total maximum indebtedness could be. And then you can start identifying projects and, uh, moving forward. But I think a goal for this council this year is do the assessment, get a boundary in place so you could start understanding those areas and agree as a council, your new area, right? And then you can identify projects like, but you have, you're, you're existing, everyone knows about two years to sunset. You can have multiple, but your, your percentage of area that you have right now is probably, I'd have to look at what you're at from that standpoint right now first, so.
I would only ask that maybe you could extend the lake shore part of it slightly further because the cost encompassed with the trail and everything that would have to be redone is going to go further down lake shore. So if we cap it off at the midpoint right there, where it's just before that, um, that's going to leave a lot of cost on the table that I would, I would ask that we have funds of some sort to look at. So if we cap it off right there, we're going to lose a lot of the trail in the bigger picture.
That's our current. So we're looking at, like, this is the mill property.
Yeah, I see the, where the community center is.
Stay contiguous. And so if you come across the highway and you keep a little line.
Maybe keep, maybe keep the.
Just go on all the way down. So we kind of start at like where it says dogwood there and go that way, cross the highway and hit the mill property.
Maybe can, maybe include the.
We could include wastewater, the riverfront. The riverfront commercial, that could be, uh, that could be one of the options.
Yeah.
But when you think about if we're six, that avenue takes that, that right turn and goes, then heads out of town. Um, that's going to need to be redone. And if we connect the, if we connect right there, if we connect six, no, that's the wrong end of town. It's up farther. If we try to connect six down through the mill property to the highway, that's a huge infrastructure project that, you know, if that's developing, we're going to have to work on. I don't know. But, but anyway, that's, well, but that's the idea is to look at a few different like maps, what to include, what do we cut out, what do we add on? And that would come back to council to, to make a recommendation on it.
That's it, yeah.
Okay, we have, we don't have enough time. So it's, but unless you want to, unless nobody's in a rush.
Do a round, I mean, thank you and do a round table, uh, everyone get a last final closing.
Yeah.
And then, uh.
I think, yes, and thinking, thank you for that, the last, like a last comment. If, if we go through staff, if there's anything that you did not see get written, this, I'm sorry, this is a mess. If we hired a consultant who draws pretty pictures.
I like downhill.
Beautiful. I know, like. Yeah, I don't.
Yeah.
Uh, okay. This looks bad, but if there's something, like if we didn't touch on anything the council was hoping to see us talk about or staff like to see as a priority or thinks we need as a priority, and then we'll have to go back and, because I'm, like I said, in, I'm moving ahead. People want to move it ahead, but there's still stuff that we're doing back here. And so we will try to frame this in a way that we can move this stuff forward without dropping what we're already doing or having to hire five more people. So we'll have to evaluate that.
Can I ask just a question before we break this up and, and we give our comments? Um, we've got all the workers in here, okay? We've got public works, we've got water department, we've got sewer, we've got everything right here. And this is the only chance that I really get to ask them the needs that they may have going forward. So I think we're on the right track, getting them what they need to do their job. I heard from Don that he could use a few more employees. I haven't heard from Chris, if there's any needs he has in his area that I'd like to get a, a, a key on. So I know going forward where we need to, to get the money. And Michelle, with the library, I need to know where the library is at, what they would like to see in the future, so I can get a better idea going forward if we're on the right track. So is that something we can do?
Sure. Yeah, you want to start with staff and then we'll wrap up with, um, with the council, yeah. So we want to, maybe, do you want to go first, Don? And, or I could, or I could kick it to Peter and he could say if he thinks we need to address anything legally too. Would you rather do that? Yeah, let's do Peter first and we'll go this way. And then we'll come over and do Don, Chris and Michelle.
I just, you know, I, I think you have to look at low hanging fruit. And, um, I think that, that finding the leaks in the water system, doing that versus spending millions and millions of dollars to get water rights that we might not be able to get from the state. To me, that's just a, it makes so much fiscal sense and it's something that the community can really understand. Fixing what we have versus trying to build a bunch of new stuff. Um, and I would just encourage, I, I mean, I think that's a great use of funds. I have a community I represent that has less than five percent waste. Um, that might be hard to get to, but, um, I mean, we, I think you guys can really demonstrate a lot of benefit to the community and that demonstrate how important being fiscally prudent is. And then the other thing is I'm probably going to start staffing the planning commission because I need to after reviewing a couple of meetings and, um, just letting people know about what we can't control, I think is going to be really important because there's some people that, there're going to be things where we can't say no, and there're going to be things where we can say no. And just making sure we have a real strong record that supports our decision-making. And that's something that we talk about a lot. Um, and so we'll try and identify those things as those projects come from you.
Defining the lens before the meeting starts, that would be helpful too for the public that's coming that doesn't know.
Yeah.
If you told them what lens the committee's having to look at that project through at the beginning and that's like the law, they can't vary from that. They don't have a choice in the matter.
Right.
Then they might understand a little bit more, you know?
Yeah.
Because if that's the first time they've ever come to a meeting, they're not going to know.
All right. Well, I think that we touched on the two main things that planning has long-term for this coming year, and that's the parks, um, parks master plan update, parks, I don't know, park solutions, parkland solutions, phase two. Um, and then the code audit that we just talked about. So, um, so as we keep those in mind and keep making forward progress on those, I think, planning is, uh, we're, we're excited with that.
How's it going being understaffed with, like, obviously Taylor was a big hit. It's like, there's a lot of changes, is what I'm, I'm saying, you know, Brian too, and.
Yeah, I mean, fortunately, I can say it's been working out pretty well. Um, Winterbrook, Brook has been great. I mean, it's been personally the har, the hardest part, um, has been not having another planner to kind of bounce ideas off of and brainstorm with, but yeah, Winterbrook is fantastic. Um, Taylor is missed, but yeah, Winterbrook is, is filling a role that, um, yeah, that, that Taylor was, was filling. So, yeah, thanks.
Uh, something we didn't really talk about, uh, we kind of hinted towards it is when we're talking about the uses of the downtown properties, we've been talking with the school district as part of this larger workforce development. And I want to make sure that that's something that you guys are all on board with is that where we would potentially be partnering to write a grant to work on workforce development, like with the school district and with the college. And, and I, so I, I mean, we talk about the downtown properties, but not specifically workforce development part of that.
True.
Um, and then this is not like this year, but I think, I think it would be behoove us, uh, fiscally to look long-term at building our own building, uh, department. So right now we contract with Northwest Code Pros. And if we could do that in, in-house, it would be saving us a lot of money.
I am completely on board with that.
You'll get no argument from me on that either.
Yeah.
As long as there's no drop in efficiency.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's the same.
Yeah, there might be an increase in efficiency, actually.
Yeah.
Should write that, like, explore.
Other options.
Okay.
The, the inspection time thing was nice and dealing with Alex and he's fairly, seems to be fairly flexible. But then like the communication sometimes between David can be very vague or not there or oops, I sent it the wrong email, but it didn't, doesn't fall. Anyway, there's a different working example. I'd be really interested to see that.
Mads is fantastic. We are working with them to get their training so that they can kind of bump up to do some of the inspections. But we would still need to bring on additional staff with that specific training.
I don't, Melanie and Elena and Sadie kind of helped me with any needs, employees and stuff like that. Uh, my main thing is I think we still need to look at park land, but they're in parks master plan. So it's the ball fields. Now I know we, the city that doesn't own any. And it helped take some stress, stress off the schools because I know the, the coaching that I'm doing, the stress of finding fields and playing time and stuff like that to get these kids more opportunities on the field have been, it's hard. So, and, uh, I want to look into developing Camp and All Park. I know not a splash pad, pickleball, but something needs to happen there. It's just, we're mowing up. It's a pasture right now and there's eleven to twelve people influencing what we do to that. And I think we should go out and actually build something there. Get some for the kids. There's a lot of kids that are going to be connected to that and there's a main road that's about to go through there. Be a great place. There's eight acres there that we could do a lot of cool stuff with.
Uh, yeah, I was, I meant to ask about that earlier, if that would have meant infrastructure, uh, needs on looking at a property for park space or something like that in our bold moves this year and trying to look at acquiring things or what it would take to grant to do it.
Okay, you mentioned you need new people. Uh, you made that very clear that parks here deficient in some fashion as far as what you need and where we're going. So is that something you can honestly say we, we need?
I need s- a supervisor more than, we, we, the parks department we have is great. They do, they mow, they pull the weeds, they do all that stuff, but I'm looking for someone that does the health of the grass. I want the grass green. I want the flowers looking good. I want the health of all the flower beds doing good and I'm not, I need someone that's, they went to school for it, someone that knows that can help me out to where it kind of takes some off of my plate. But other than that, our roads department, we're, as town grows, I think there's thirty centerline miles right now. So we're, as the neighborhoods start getting bigger, we're going to have to branch out and start getting some more employees, but I think we're pretty decent.
Good. Thank you for that. Chris?
I think we're on the right track for the new wastewater plant, pioneering, designing all that stuff. The biggest part, he, he wants to see is our I and I, because that's huge.
Yeah.
Even with the new treatment plant, we don't address our I and I. We're still going to be in trouble.
Yeah.
That's all. New plans to do.
Okay.
The water treatment plant side, I'd like to see us be more aggressive on upgrading the water treatment plant so we we don't get behind on growth.
Yeah.
Because I don't want to be the one that people are saying, well, I can see we do this ahead of time.
I got you.
So if we get everything as much as we can, okay.
On board with that.
Have we looked at numbers on that? What? Well, just what do you need? What, what's your maintenance budget? What do you need to start addressing some of these issues, these upgrades?
Uh, distribution, I mean, just getting the equipment step one. We have some money in the budget this year to get equipment, but I think we're going to kind of hit it hard money-wise and then, and that's going to be able to identify. Right now, probably majority of our leaks are on copper lines that were installed from like ninety-five to two thousand thirteen. And it was improperly bedded in clay. So you see those brand new neighborhoods with big old that cuts in the asphalt. That's just from contractors putting copper and mud. And so I think that's, that's some of the leaks. Our mains don't usually leak, they blow. So you're not going to have very many water main leaks because we have C nine hundred and asbestos concrete pipe. So.
Here I have the water rights in the markets.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm with you.
Social media or whatever. It's like, there's a river right there. So we got to manage the growth, what we have.
So Brian said the I and I, I get you on that one. I'm with you. So, uh, you feel that we have enough equipment, you've got enough people in both the water treatment and everything that you're doing good at this point?
What it's going to take to operate the mix up here, but right now we're good.
All right, great. Thank you. Michelle?
I just wanted to mention that the library does write our own grants.
Yeah.
And we got a, we'll be all through a, and I got under the two thousand dollars from the, uh, library services.
It's, it was basically a federal grant that was administered by the state library of Oregon. And our staff usually writes a lot smaller grants, um, usually less than five thousand dollars, but we, we do that on our own. And, um, I just wanted to mention, maybe one of our biggest issues is, um, building maintenance. So we're coming up on almost twenty years of this location of the, of our new library that was here for such a long time, forty years in this room. Um, when, whenever we have an issue, like something starts to go bad, we've had two door failures. It took a really long time to figure out. Because I don't really have that knowledge. And so I may end up calling maybe not the wrong people, but I call a lot of people to find the right people to do the job. Um, so maybe this is part of a bigger thing of, you know, the city and.
Um, so maybe this is part of a bigger thing of, you know, the city and us collaborating on getting somebody. To help us with those issues, like right now, we've got seven or eight, uh, light lamps that are out. And I've called somebody, and so we need new ballasts in there, and we just got done doing new ballast, but for some reason, these are all starting to go out again. So, um, things like window cleaning, getting the carpets cleaned. Um, those are some things that I would like some assistance on, this may be across the board with all our facilities.
Could we add a team member to Public Works that could kind of crossover in that. Exact area, is that something that the city?
That's something we could look at in the budget, yeah, to add a facilities person that would, because we're gonna have an updated. Uh, public workshop, we're gonna have a new admin, admin building for wastewater, we've got this building, we've got the library. And, and we have Public Works crew that is very busy, um, who we used to just kind of lean on for things like that, but yeah. I, we can look at that in the budget.
Let's put something together and take a look at that, put it in front of the council, cuz that's something I think we could really utilize, if she's using it, it's a crossover. Public Works has it, we, we, it's a double whammy, so I think that's, that only makes sense, I can't.
Janitorial, yeah, janitorial and facilities.
And that could be a contractor sometime.
Yes, I will add that on there, um. And Sadie didn't have anything to add except for, um, it was great to be able to pull some responsibilities off of her and hire a new person last year in our front office. Um, and so now we have a person who's part-time HR, part-time deputy city recorder, that's why you see Taryn here at every other meeting. Uh, and so that has been great, and I wanna say, before we go to, um, council, unless you wanted to add anything else. Okay, I wanna say thank you to staff for being here, we kind of got hit hard over the last couple of weeks, and a few of them have been sick, very sick. And so I thank you for getting well, for getting here, cuz I know that, uh, I can kind of tell some of them are still on the, on the mend, and I don't know how you all are doing, but. You're looking perky, so, I think you're, you're all fine, except for, except for Mike's rant, huh? Um, anyway, yeah, let's go, however mayor you wanna do it, to have the council wrap up.
Let's, uh, let's start Jerry, since he's council president now, let's see what he's got to say.
Well, I think the one, one thing that we didn't touch enough on was, was community engagement, um, and accessibility to. Got, you know, cities, city government, I think we need to, you know, put a little bit more into, um. You know, getting the, figuring out ways to get the community involved more, um. I'd like to see some sort of a, I've been saying it for the last year and a half, but I'd like to see some sort of volunteer program. Um, you know, to get volunteers for the events that the, that our committees puts on, to get volunteers for, you know. Stuff, just to build a volunteer base, um. You know, just, just stuff like that, I think we need to, we need to touch a little bit more on a community engagement and accessibility. But, and thank you guys, thank you guys all for coming out, this has been a, a great, um. A, a great, um, goal-setting session, I think that we've had some really good discussion. Um, even when it got a little heated, it was good discussion, um, but, uh, you know, I, I really.
It's passion.
Yes, well, yes, we are very passionate people, and, uh, um, if we weren't passionate, there, there'd be no reason for us to be up here, so. Um, thank you guys all for showing up today.
Thank you, Jerry.
Do we ever make, do we ever come back to make a note about looking at the pot growing in the, in M one zone?
No, we did not.
We were gonna come back to it when we got to the, I'd like to take a look at, um, changing that.
That would be.
Putting a sunset, you know, or switching it out.
Oh.
Yeah.
Okay.
Really just remove it isn't allowed use.
Yeah.
That is basic code.
Another thing I, that came to mind on the, down at the industrial park is, um, I found out like. It's happened a couple of times in the last couple of weeks, where I found out there was a business in there, that I, there's a butcher supply business that's in there, I never knew it was there.
Hmm.
What does it look like for the, to get a sign up in front in the right of way? Um, several of the business owners have asked me about getting a sign up where the companies could put their names on it.
Yeah.
Nope, I'm not saying the city needs to pay for it, they'll pay for it, but the, to weave through all the bureaucracy of what it's gonna take to put a.
Yeah.
Sign up, cuz it's all like. There's Department of Forestry land.
That's great to hear, uh.
Or, uh, public right of ways.
I think it's a great opportunity, we'd have to look at the code to see what's allowed out there, but, um. You know, really identifying that great industrial park, and if, you know, and if the. Normally way, a large area would like, you'd have a big furnished sign like that, and there'd be participation to be on the signage, right? But it's a great opportunity to really brand coming in this, to get a brand industrial park, and then. If there is interest with the companies participating, going back to the master, kind of creating that wayfinding master signage plan. And then saying, okay, if we do this pylon sign out here, this is how much, and, uh, to the, you know, to the. Companies within the park, and that's, that'd be just fantastic.
And pass just putting a sign up, being decorative about it.
Being a, being a good deck, and that could really brand coming in.
Difference on how it looks coming in, that industrial park is such an amazing place.
Yeah.
With the businesses that have come there and are coming there.
Yeah.
I wanna emphasize that, so obviously, yeah, I think that's a great idea, I'm glad you brought that.
Might have to bend the, sign the code a little bit, but I don't know.
Well, yeah, and it depends on whether the property is within city limits, or if it's, if it's state.
Land is, when we put a sign up, Department of Forestry called me and said, take it down, so that particular piece of strip of it was.
Yeah.
The whole sign is, there's a sign right there that old industrial parks, I'd, I'd have to look and see where that's.
Yeah, somebody was nice enough to give them a call. Competitive signs.
We need to update the sign that's there, um, on the way in, that was like fifteen years ago, that sign went in. Um, so we, I know that was Parks and, oh, maybe ODOT, Parks, no, it was Parks and PGE, I think. And then our city code, so we'll have to look into how to do that, but maybe that one, we already have permission there, we could just do an update. At that location, or I don't know, wherever people wanna put it further in, but that might be an EDC initiative to, to.
Then I just had one last thing, was focusing on ideas to promote affordable housing for actual homeownership. We hear affordable housing all the time, and it's just a fancy way to say, we need more apartments, but I'd like to see if we can. What we can do to encourage, like, three hundred thousand dollar homes, you know, low point of entry. That'll service the seniors in our community that are selling bigger properties, that don't wanna move out of the community, as well as the young people that are graduating, maybe not when they're eighteen, but. Twenty-two, twenty-four, twenty-five, somewhere in that age range, so that those young families have a place where they can move out to, uh, be a part of Estegata, cuz it just, when you own something. You're just more invested in it, and I think we'll get better results the more homeownership we get out here, not to say we don't, I'm, we're gonna need apartments too, but. I think the greater the ratio of homeownership to multifamily, you're gonna have better results across the board.
I'm gonna kind of put that on in the parking lot, because it's, I don't, maybe I'm wrong, if we can fit it in someplace else, we will. Fit it with the other goals, but I think that's a good, um. It's a, it's challenging, but it's a good thing to work on, um, yeah, I know we were explaining to the civics academy why. Um, Faraday has such small lot sizes, and that the intention of the council was that these would be more affordable homes. But when the market is up here, even though you have a tiny little lot with a tiny house. There's, yeah, so that, it's challenging, but I think that is something we need to keep on our radar, cuz I think you're right, ownership, ownership in the community.
World of difference.
Is a lot, so.
I like that.
Yeah. Um, so the civics academy, I'd really, I really wanna focus on continuing efforts like that, it really helps the public know what. We can and cannot do, so if we can continue stuff like that, that would be great. Um, I'm excited about the goals and projects we have planned, um, as the liaison for the DEI. I wanna thank everyone for participating in the discussion about it, and I look forward to discussing, uh, the ad hoc option more.
Yeah, I think, uh, for me, I mean, I, we got to talk about this a little bit, Mr. Legarza, but, uh. I think it's really interesting, I feel like we're at a time now where. Rather than just plan and talk about things coming down the road, we actually get to be actionable as a council and deliver results. Finally, like things are aligning to be able to start checking off tangible things to the community members, and so. My idea is, this year is just on being bold and going out and finding ways that, whatever we do, that it's. We, we put measurable constraints on it, and we take ownership and accountability of it all. So, for me, that's where, I'd like to look at the conversation, the first time we brought it up, I, I wasn't interested. Because we all get comments all the time about being paid members of this, or receiving any kind of compensation, and quite frankly, it's voluntarily. But you brought something up at the beginning of this as well, Melanie, that stuck out to me, where you said, you know, like the council, they're here. And then they're gone, right, and then the next one kind of picks up and tries to help that up, and you're right, you guys are here the whole time. Continuing to work on our vision, or the changing visions as it goes, and deliver the best product. And I think that you've done really well with what you had, and some of this requires us to, quite frankly. Be more directive, or give you more, so that you can make sure you're doing things that we appreciate and align with, so. I don't wanna micromanage or anything like that, that's not my objective in this, I just think that we need to look at being more involved, and I think that we should have a conversation about. Making this paid, so that for council, maybe even committees, look at what we could do, incentivize committees as well. We're having a lack of people wanting to be involved, so what can we do to invest in our community to get them there? And then along those lines, my thinking on the, talking about the pay structure comes from incentivizing our best. To come and put their time in on this, quite frankly, because that's what this is supposed to be. I'm, the people up here, I'm not saying that there's not people that can make better decisions, I'm not saying that there's can't, but the people up here are supposed to be. The community's best representation, and they should be, they should be the biggest business leaders, and I'm not saying that because we aren't. We don't mean anything, our value isn't, but we should try to attract kind of people that can help generate more economic stimulus, more opportunity. You know, and so with that, I think we should have a conversation about incentivizing it, because then we're gonna get people that come, and they're bought in. For their time here, they're not just sitting up here to vote when it's something that strikes an emotional chord, or something like that. This is, now we're all taking more ownership, we're all more hands-on, when we're getting asked questions, we're getting beat up about stuff. Well, then it makes more sense, because, you know, I'm being paid to sit up here and submerge myself in nine hundred and seventy-five documents, or whatever that may be. It's not so much for the interest of gain, as it is, again, eliciting more help and better help, and so I think we have a conversation with that takes.
Yeah, I think putting it in perspective of, more of respect than earnings, it's just saying, hey, we respect you for what you do. That's kind of what you're asking, and I, I'm assuming that's what this is, right?
Well, from my understanding, the, the city has to vote, the citizens have to vote on it anyway, it has to go to ballot.
Yeah.
So what we're asking for here, what I'm saying is that we do the work in advance, like we have been. Cuz no matter what, it's gonna go to the ballot, so they get the end say, but rather than surprise a month before. Or two months before, like, hey, what do you guys think about doing this, let's have the conversation and give them a free working internship. For nine months until it hits the ballot essentially, because that's what you're doing, you're proving to them right now, that you deserve to be paid for the work that you continue to do. Right, or you don't, and then what do we gotta take to get that, but if it could incentivize more talented people to come to these committees. And make it worth their time that they're missing away from work, or their other activities, coaching, and so on and so forth, that they're all involved in. Why not try it?
So, in essence, it's a stipend.
Peter, would that have to be put on the ballot by the, the people, or by, or if we put that on?
We would, we have to do a charter amendment, um, and the council could put that on the. And it would be, the charter amendment would, would authorize, uh. Um, essentially a committee, I, I mean, there are very specific rules in Oregon about how compensation for electives is. So, but yeah, I'll take a look at our current charter, and, and we'll figure out what we would need to do in the form of a charter amendment.
Okay, good, I think, John.
So, first time here, um, you know, very excited. Uh, not sure what to expect, so very thankful for process and procedure. Very thankful for expertise and experience to, to help in this process. Um. The, the, the down, you know, the, I guess the idea of, of, um. Taking as much control as possible of what our future holds, instead of having things happen to us. And, you know, I think the, the investigating the real estate options, I think that's a, a nice step in that direction. But again, helping to control and, and sculpt our vision for. Uh, how it is out here, cuz I remember when we moved out here, and we fell in love immediately, there's just a vibe about this place, it's eclectic. You know, when I talk to people about, about Estekada, I talk about Spiral Gallery. I talk about the library, I talk about being downtown when the, the bus came by with the football team on the way to the championship game. Man, that's awesome, um, you look on the website and you see. Such a variety of things to do here, I mean, they got the manga club, and they got the, the quilt thing, and they got, there's just everything here. And, eh, what I'm hearing is that, that. Maybe not everyone is, is understanding or seeing that we have all of these different things to do for all of these different sorts of people. You know, I see it on the, on the city page, whatever it is, but. Ways to reach out to, to those people that may not be seeing that sort of stuff, because that's what makes us so great. And so awesome, um, the. I do, I, I do appreciate the structure, cuz I could just yak 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 yak, but, uh, um. You know, I think, I, I think we're on the right track. Um, I do appreciate the fact that we can talk about things and disagree, and but at the end of the conversation, we're all good. Um, I, I totally believe this year, this year is gonna be crazy, I think I mentioned it earlier, but there's a. A riptide going this way, and a riptide going this way, and they're gonna clash, and it's gonna be turbulent at some times, so our ability to navigate that together. Um, is, is going to be really important, uh, for not just us as a body, but, uh, us as a community.
Yeah, I like that. Um. This is not gonna be about me, it's gonna be about, uh, city staff, I know sometimes we give you a headache. In a big way, and you think we're not on track, or maybe we're just not appreciating the value of you. I wanna tell you right here, I appreciate each and every one of you in this room for what you do, I don't always tell you that. Sometimes I come at you with something that sounds so stupid, that you just wanna slap me upside the head, I get that, um. But at the same time, I wouldn't have any other staff, you guys are impeccable about what you do, and who you are. Um, Sadie, you're worth a million, I can't say enough about you, uh, you've been with us forever, I can remember. The day you were here, and I just gotta say, you're, you're, you're great. John Legarza, I've worked with you on several projects over the years, and I never thought I could have the chance to have you. On board with us, doing what you do, but since you are, you've made great changes to everything that we're going and doing going forward. I appreciate that, because you are the catalyst behind the magic that we're gonna create here. And I wanna tell you, I'm proud to have you on board, Melanie, you are the person you are. You've been through a lot, you have to navigate through everything that we go through going forward, I get that, that can be difficult. With so many different ideas of how that's done, but we appreciate you, and we know you are growing daily. At what our city is going to be, and I can appreciate that as well, and everybody in here also does, so we hope you understand that. Peter, also, very important to this community and very important to the council. I've worked with you over the years on many different projects, we've been through a lot on the, uh. Tourism, back in the early days, to where you sit on this council now, and because you're here. You keep us out of dangerous waters, and at the same time, through the path going forward, and we appreciate everything that you do. Alan, you have a tough job, we are getting busier and growing extensively. You are taking on everything that comes at you with. Brilliance, that's all I can say, you, you handle these amazing things, developments going in, businesses going in, expectations from council. And not once have I heard you complain about that, we thank you for that. Elena, you are the money guru, I appreciate everything that you do. Sometimes you go a different direction, maybe than I'd like, but at the same time, you always come out on top of that, and with that, I respect you at the highest level. But we wanna thank you for everything that you bring to the table. That said, I wanna thank you all for spending time with me today, and this council, and these city workers. And going forward, we have a big task, but I know all of you could accommodate that. I respect each and every one of you in your way, and you're all different, but at the same time, you're all experts in them, so thank you for that. And for this retreat that we had, I appreciate everything that we've gotten today, and the fact that you kept civil with each other. This is a long time coming, this council. This is a long time coming, this council has developed in something that I think is powerful and positive, so keep doing that, thank you. And that's the end of mine.
Thank you, everyone, so appreciate your time today, thank you, Mary, thank you.